Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Workshop. Today is Tuesday, October 14th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. We are in the John Nett's Community Wing of City Hall. I'm calling this meeting to order. If you have any devices, please silence them at this time. And if you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and a short moment of silence.
Allison, if you could please call to roll.
Mayor Norris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Present.
Councilmember Gombaro.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
And Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll begin tonight's meeting with 30 minutes for public comment. Please refrain from any items that are on the agenda and follow the rules as printed in your agenda. So if anyone has a public comment.
Chairman, I had just one quick comment.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yesterday was the 250th anniversary of the United States Navy, of which I was happy to be a part of for about 28 years. And that also includes the Department of the Navy, which also includes the United States Marine Corps, just in case the Marines forgot that. And so I wanted to, it's a significant event, and it was our birthday yesterday.
Thank you, sir.
And the motto of the Navy, which is, there's a few different ones, but the one I always like is "Always Courageous."
Thank you, sir. I think Christian, they may have already deployed.
The Marine Corps appreciates the rides. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Go right ahead, Ms. Chantel. State your name for the record.
Chantal Prillinger. So what appears to be a 5G or cell tower a few feet away from Marvin's Garden Shops of 100 is being installed. No warning to either next door businesses literally a few feet away, and I mean walking, no residents in Section Z. So since you like making rules and regulations, please make one that prohibits any cell or 5G towers visit a mile or two from schools, businesses, or residential areas, and bring down the existing ones. We've had enough health experiments as it is and too many cases of cancer. Also, please stop expensive studies at the citizens' expense. If you know something needs to be done, get it done. No study needed, for example, to decrease the speed limits in residential areas. If studies absolutely need to be done in order to fly for bonds, please use steady staff or reasonably priced teams. An amount of $2,235 an hour for a team to do a study is an insult to residents. It is stealing, and it won't get you, any of you elected, or as a matter of fact, elected somewhere else. So the budget you just voted in, I should have attended it, but overall, I feel no matter how much time people come here and speak their mind to you, we're not being heard. So the budget, 695 million in a city of 114,523, which is the estimated amount of residents for next year, that makes it about six, a little bit over $6,000 per resident, which is 2,000 more than it costs to live in the city, to have the streets done and everything that a city does. And of course, we still have to pay the utilities. So the waste of money in that budget is infuriating. It's not because it doesn't come from your own pocket that is right to authorize any suggestion. Two seconds, okay.
Thank you, ma'am. And Ms. Chantel, I'll send you a copy of our master wireless plan. We have a plan for the city. I meant to send it to you, but I got called up, I didn't get called up, but I'll send you that plan. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Howard Hall, a CEO and publisher of Touchpoint Innovative Solutions. We publish Evolve Magazine, Esteban Magazine, Evolve News, and Parent Magazine. I want to first thank you for your time and your talents that you're providing to this city, and best wishes on your city manager's selection. We're all counting on you. Over the August and September time period, I interviewed city council members, county commissioners, and city and county administrators. I found some common themes and shared views that I wanted to communicate. Number one, there is a shared view that there is a correlation between economic vitality and growth and quality of life. Number two, that there is an overreliance on resident property taxes, which is not sustainable over time. Number three, that we must significantly and immediately increase commercial and industrial property investments in our cities, towns, and county. And number four, that we must improve the job base, more jobs, better paying jobs, career jobs. As you know, here in Flagler County, Palm Coast represents 78% of the county's population. What you may not know is that in Leon County, Tallahassee represents 69%. Very similar. I had an opportunity to spend every month over a 10-month period traveling to Tallahassee when I was appointed by former Speaker Paul Renner as a member of the Florida Museum of Black History Task Force. What I learned is that they have a model that we should consider replicating and emulating. Leon and Tallahassee created a collaborative, integrative, and strategic Office of Economic Vitality. They integrated across the county and the city. I believe it is something that we could model and something we should consider, and who's "we"? Government, businesses, and residents. The first step in that process is to form a Blue Ribbon Commission, which is what they did, to learn what steps and what we need to do, what can we learn from them, and how do we put together an overarching game plan? And we must act now. We must face the fierce urgency of now. I want to quote this person, quote, "We are now faced with the fact that tomorrow is today. We are confronted with the fierce urgency of now. In the unfolding conundrum of life and history, there is such a thing as being too late. This is no time for apathy or complacency. This is a time for vigorous and positive action." Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm John Ferrara. I voted for some here. I hope I did the right thing. I have a water issue with the water department. Two weeks ago, I had a water line break at my dock with the bad weather we've had, and I went through 74,000 gallons of water. It ran for five days because the automation was not working for the weekend, because you people have not let the finances go through supposedly for that to work. So I get a bill for $1,758. I know I can get a $500 deductible, which I paid some of the bill today, and I talked to the manager at the water department. What I'm here for is there's something not right with this, and it ought to be taken care of. I filled up my canal, as far as I'm concerned, okay, because I didn't know this water was running until Monday morning. It broke Friday morning. The automatic machine did not work for the weekend. So now I get a bill for the 1,700, let's see, 1,741.67, and I'm getting charged for sewer base and sewer use. Sewer base is $25.46, and the sewer use is $525.95. Now, I didn't use the sewer, so I'm expecting something to be done with this, because I'm not going to sit on this. You basically made this rule as far as no more than a $500 deductible, but when you cut off the automation for the weekend to tell me, I could have found out Saturday morning instead of Monday morning. So I want this taken off my bill, because I don't feel it's fair, and I feel in honesty, you're basically robbing me of my money. I didn't use your service, so how could you charge me for your service? I filled the canal, like I said. That's all I did, because all this water ran under the dock, and the pipe was under the dock, so I never saw it running, because the dock lifted and pulled the pipes apart, but it was underwater. So when I finally investigated after the automated call, I found the leak and got it fixed. So I want to do something with these charges that come to $550 or $551 that I should not be paying. I already made a, with the manager today, I already made a deal to pay so much a month on what was I owe, but what I don't owe, I don't feel I should owe that charge. I didn't use the system. So I'm coming here to tell you about it. How do I get an answer from you? Is that another time, or do you guys have to discuss it? Because I'm not satisfied with this at all, and if I don't get satisfied, it's not going to stop here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City manager, can you point him in the right direction?
Sure. Ms. Kershaw, can you please get this gentleman's contact information, and we will look into the details of the case? If you'll see Ms. Kershaw, she'll get your contact information.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Kathy Sarris, Palm Coast. I'm here to keep on requesting about another animal shelter. I saw you had renewed the contract with the Flagler Humane Society, which you have to, because you guys have nowhere to shelter the dogs. But at one point, it was asked that one of the commissioners go on their board of directors, and now it's a liaison to meet with someone from their shelter and someone from their board, and I believe Ms. Pontieri is volunteered to do that. But I don't know if you remember seeing this. It was an official statement put out by the Flagler Humane Society, and it was to all Flagler County and Palm Coast governments, and it has fiction and fact, okay? So the one point that I wanted to talk about was that it said that they denied one of you commissioners, city or county, to be on their board, and it says that is wrong. They did never deny any of you. No one applied. Did you know you have to apply? I know it was asked, but why doesn't someone apply to be on the board of members? Obviously, they have a lot of stuff that they don't want to be known over there, and it's a disgrace. And they say they do not house animals in crates. They do house animals in crates. In the food storage room, I've seen three animals living in crates, not little puppies, not little cute dogs. These are medium-sized dogs. Two, I can remember, one was Donnie, he was euthanized, and another one was Ernie, and he was euthanized. Well, how can a dog live in a crate in a food storage room for months and then be a nice little pet for someone? And you know as well as I know, their behavior is totally different when they're in a home than when out the shelter. They're scared at the shelter, they're not loved, and I just, please, can you just give us some land, and we can raise funds? The Department of Public Works, they helped with the grounding and the building of the Southern Recreational Facility there. We can use our utilities that we have within. Builders here, they want their name on services and materials donated, but we have to know where, so please, just get together with the county and donate some land so we can get another shelter and save these poor animals. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, Mr. Stone.
We're going to go back to January, when you guys took a vote on the water rates, and it all goes back to capital expenditure. There has been none in this city for six state years, as Councilman, Councilwoman Teresa originally pointed it out when you took a vote. Unfortunately, because being retired, I read a lot of stuff on social media. There's too many people complaining about the increase of the water. There's a lot of areas in Palm Coast that have yellow water. I could tell you the swelling areas in Sesame Boulevard, full of water still, and it's causing a lot of insects, all kinds of them, just hanging out in the water on our property. I mean, there's no reason for two people to be paying $300 a month for water. It's outrageous. And the people behind you, who are in charge of that department, need to be held accountable. People can't afford it. This country is in a lockdown. People aren't making money. You can't make any money in Palm Coast, that's for sure, because there are no businesses here other than the hospitals. So everyone's having a heart attack and panic. A lot of people came up with suggestions and started funding, and put money aside for the single parents, who are not getting money from their spouses, or the senior citizens who can't afford utilities. It's just outrageous. The first year living in Florida, we spent maybe $60 on a water bill. Today, they still have not raised their rates. So why is Palm Coast having a problem with such high water bills? Point Orange is the same situation. Monthly, two people, $80. $300 for two people is outrageous, and I'm sure you're going to keep on going up on it if you don't get control. And like I said, Cody or whoever is part of there, let them start a fund, give up some of their salary, help the senior citizens in these cities who have only one income. There was a lady talking on social media, she's going to have to turn off her water, or the city will turn it off, just to afford to get food and not pay for water. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Caroline.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to come in and address.
State your name for the record.
Sorry, Caroline Johnson, Smart Animal Rescue. I wanted to come in in response to a recent city council meeting where the Humane Society budget was approved, and Amy responded to some questions. So I've had a few messages from some of our followers that donate to us, that were a little concerned and confused regarding her statement, that I think her response to the statement overall said that the local rescues are bringing in dogs or cats that we may rescue, and then surrendering them to her, where she can't get maybe money per pet, like is in the contract, and that they have to pay for vetting. I just wanted to assure both the city officials and our followers and the public that we in no way, shape, or form bring any animals, period, to the shelter. Since I stopped volunteering there over three years ago, I haven't brought any dogs there at all. I, we, when we put them into foster, we cover all of their vetting 100%. We do a whole lot of vetting for them. It's very costly, and we fundraise for every penny of that. We don't rely on the Humane Society at all for vet care, and we don't surrender any dogs there. I know she mentioned calling Barbara Grossman about that. Barbara and I have a very good working relationship for the animals, as well as all the animal control officers. Once we take a dog under our organization, that dog's with us till it's adopted. So I just wanted to clarify that, so there's no confusion on your end, and thank you, Ms. Pontieri, for bringing that up and even looking out for the rescues and making sure that we are treated fairly, and that there is a way for us to do something if we find a stray and know where to take it. Right now, our protocol is, just for clarity, is if we find a dog and, or trap a dog, and we cannot find the owner, we do scan for microchips, we drive the area, we put up signage, you know, found dog signs in the area, we work with animal control to try to locate the owner through licensing, et cetera. If we don't find the dog and we cannot find a foster, I will take the dog to one of the animal control officers, and if they don't know where the dog lives, they may take it to the shelter. But if they do that, then that 156 a pet or whatever they get per pet, they would still get. So there's nothing blocking them from getting money if we find a dog. I've been running the lost pet page for roundabout 10 years, and we're not going to locate every owner for a pet, and we don't have fosters, unfortunately, for all of them. So I just wanted to put a little clarity, so you understand that every pet that we take into our organization, we cover 100% of the vetting for them through donations from the community. We don't get any funding from city or county, not that we've even tried, because we don't have property to house them, so we're not looking for a contract. But thank you all for the support for the animals, and thank you for working towards a new resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Wendy Tremarche. The following are nine counties starting for expanding animal shelters: Citrus, Broward, Alachua, Clay, Orange, Sumter, Marion, Indian River County, where I am on their board, and Volusia. Where are we on this list? Why is Flagler County so far behind? For about a year and a half, the city and county have been asking the Humane Society for current complete data, independent financials, and a proper strategic plan. Where is it? Now you are having, giving them more funds with zero accountability. The executive director just publicly stated, when asked, why there was no local government represented, representation on the shelter board. She said they have never applied. Well, they did, both boards. I've been in meetings with, at both times when they were asked, and their president said no. Both the city and county asked at meetings and were denied. Do you all think that once-a-quarter meeting with two hand-picked board members and the executive director will give you a true analysis of what is happening there? It will not, and I'm sure you all know that. If people in tough situations have to wait 10 days to two weeks to surrender their pet, what happens? They are dumped. Then you pay all the money. Also, they know how many animals they can house. I can go there in five minutes and tell you how many animals they can hold, and that's it. I mean, it's cut and dry. In such an overcrowded building, that was Amy's, her own words, where exactly are the large walk-in cages with dogs kept? Those cages are meant for outside, and I'm sure some of them, that's where they are, is outside, because there is not room in that building for big, large animal cages, walk-ins. Finally, all animal control should be under government control, not a private entity deciding what animals are deemed dangerous, or when to leave animals on the street because they are overcrowded. You cannot have an animal control that runs by the law being managed by a nonprofit, non-government entity. You can't. Doesn't make sense. If you think about it for one minute, what is going on? If you think about it for one minute, what is going on that you will never know on the streets with these animals? Thank you again for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, Mr. Webb.
Mark Webb, Palm Coast. Happy birthday, Captain. There's a Marine ball somewhere around here that I'm sure Mr. Miller can find if he wants to drag out his uniform and go cut cake. So as a follow-up, you guys know that I've wanted to have a public opportunity at the end of every meeting. And in that, I want to make sure that we capture the closing comments from last week's meeting. The mayor, on point, brought up and discussed the future of our budget with the possible changes that were coming up. It was brief, it was at the last three minutes of the meeting, but we cannot miss this opportunity to realize that for years, in fact, several of you ran and won and are on the dais today because of your commitment to conservatism, frugal expenses, and looking at the hard choices. And I know the hard choice you made of spending the money to improve our water system was something that many groups prior to you had kicked the can down the road. So it's imperative that we don't lose sight of the need to do a deep dive financial review of the health and the expenditures of Palm Coast. Not just for the fear or concern of what may happen at Tallahassee, but it's a logical thing that we should be doing. Day in and day out, citizens come up here and question, where's this dollar going? Where are you spending this? And it is on you guys to hear that and to be tough on looking at budgets at all the areas. So Mayor, I want to applaud you for bringing it up in the end of last meeting, and I want to echo that that should not fall on deaf ears and that everybody needs to be dealing with it today. We have a new possible city manager coming in. Probably the first and biggest challenge he's going to have is figuring how to squeeze money out of the city for future. Secondly, and I don't want to remiss this, I would like somebody to explain to me how we did a final reading and voted on the e-bike ordinance when there were at least 10 revisions, some extensive, that we hadn't figured out yet. It weren't in the document, and yet it was voted on. I would ask that that document and that be presented back for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back. Yes, ma'am. You can pull the mic down, ma'am.
Okay. Victoria Amch, Palm Coast. I'll be giving you a paper, so you can read it later. Long to be here talking about and explain everything. But it's mainly in asking requests for consideration and adopting an ordinance that strengthens the enforcement of trespassing laws within gated communities. We seem to have issues with trespassers, and when a sheriff deputy is called, he'll say if it's a weekend or after hours, the office is closed, that they need to have a CDD member present to do anything, or we have to... And they clearly have signs posted where I live on a pond, which is my issue. No trespass according to Florida State Statute 810, and still people will literally fish there. And they've been recently posted, and I called the sheriff, say, Sunday, and he came, and he went to the four people that were there fishing and just told them to leave because I was complaining. And I said, well, aren't you going to give them a notice? And he said, no, can't do anything without a member being present. I said, well, did you see if they have their fishing permit, license? No, can't do anything. Aren't you going to hand them anything? You know, he just said he can't do anything. And they just left, until the next people come along. So it's a major problem, so if you could just read this and understand it better. Hopefully something...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. You can leave it with the clerk. Thank you so much. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the dais. Any follow-ups there, city manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Chantel, I believe the 5G cell phone tower that you're mentioning near Marvin's Gardens is either in the city of Bonnell or Flagler County, so the city of Palm Coast does not have jurisdiction over those towers. We do have our own wireless master plan that sets guidance, and that the mayor will send that to you. But as far as that particular tower, you would need to contact those jurisdictions to see what their allowable uses are. It is not in the city of Palm Coast. Mr. Hawley, thank you for your comments in regards to the Blue Ribbon Commission, mayor and city council. Per your direction and consensus from Ms. Pontieri's item, we have worked with a task force on westward expansion and economic development with the IDA. If you'd like for me to expand that scope with the county administrator, I'm happy to do so in our monthly meetings. I would just look for your consensus on that item.
I think the more focus we can put on economic development by a group that is focusing solely on economic development, the better. That's my position on it.
Yeah, I agree.
I support it.
I have no problem.
Thank you. In regards to the gentleman's issue regarding the water, city council, in your ordinance, it actually prohibits and allows for certain types of refunds and prohibits others because it is usage. We will look into his particular case, but we did provide him with the ordinance. In the automatic metering system, it's actually done as a courtesy, and it's not an automatic process, so that was a little bit wrong in his comments there. It's just a technology thing that we're working on trying to get into our future plans, but right now, we do not have that budgeted. So staff monitors it during operating hours, but after that, as courtesy, we do not have it going on the weekends. But we will, you know, try and address his concerns. Regarding the animal shelter, I have a joint task force meeting this Friday, so we are working on a possible site, and that information will come to you in December as a joint city-county meeting. And we will look at the comments that came to the clerk about the issues in the gated communities. Oftentimes, CDDs mirror our policies, and whenever it's in regards to trespassing, or Marcus and I had a meeting today about the e-bike ordinance, so because they are their own governing body, they have their own rules and restrictions, and so they often mirror ours. So that concludes my comments, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on the council have anything?
Yes, sir. Marcus, in terms of CDDs, they have the ability to be more restrictive and write their own ordinances, so to speak, for within those gates. Okay. And then I think city manager touched on pretty much all the concerns, except for Ms. Chantel, I was going to mention, the budget, when you're talking about that big number, a big portion of that is the bonds that are going to the utilities for all the rehab that we're going to be doing in the next five years for the utilities. The actual ad valorem, which is the property taxes, is just over 60 million. So it's a vastly different number in terms of the cost per resident than what you were talking about, because it's not that big number. It's only about 60 million, I say only, which comes to roughly $500 per resident rather than, I think you said, 6,000. So that's the only thing I wanted to correct.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So thank you to all of our animal lover folks who are out here today. Appreciate you coming in, clarifying a few things, and also really holding us accountable to what we, I think, committed to, which was trying to find a site for another animal shelter. As city manager said, we have narrowed down a few places, and so I look forward to that update in December. We are working on it. I spoke with staff about some possible sites, some very viable possible sites, either last week or the week before. So we haven't forgotten about it. It's just getting those wheels moving in government and taking land to see if it's potential, it has potential to build on, and it's going to be economically feasible, just takes some time. So I thank you for your patience in that regard. I was determined by our board to be the liaison. The Flagler Humane Society did reach out to me to set up a meeting, the first initial meeting, and then I think get ongoing meetings put on the schedule, so that we can all make sure we've got our time blocked off. So we are, they have already reached out to me and are working with me to kind of start to bring me into the loop on their board. Mr. Webb, to address your comment about the e-bike ordinance, I actually snagged our city attorney right before the meeting and let him know that I was planning on doing this during council comments, but since it was brought up, I'll go ahead and do this now. I have to tell you all, I went back and watched our meeting at the end of last week, and it did not sit right with me how many changes we made. Kind of, it seemed to be done very quickly at the end. I know we were relying, at least, I'll speak for myself, I won't say we, I apologize. I was relying on a list of typos from Commissioner Dance, but also some substantive suggestions that he made. But I don't know that it was clear from a public perspective exactly what those were. So I would ask that the final product be brought back before city council, maybe if it's even during attorney comments at the end of next week's meeting, just to make sure we all understand exactly what was done with that ordinance. Obviously, I didn't vote for the ordinance, but my intent, and I will commit this to you all, my intent is not to try to rewrite it, it's not to try to change anything that you all voted on. I respect the vote of the board, even though I was not in favor of it. But I do think that for the public's benefit, just to maybe put it back into the packet for next week, so that everybody knows exactly what ordinance is going to take effect, is what we should be doing in an effort to be as transparent as possible, because there were quite a few changes that were made to the ordinance at kind of the end of that discussion. So I would ask for consensus from this board, just to do that. Again, not trying to make any changes, just want to be transparent.
Do you think we went too far in the changes, Marcus, last week?
So I can answer that. So majority, I'm looking at Mr. Dance's thing right now, majority of them are minor changes, a typo. The two major changes that we did change were regarding what Ms. Pontieri requested with that classification, where I changed it, where there was no throttle going above 20 miles per hour based on that direction. So that was the change, that would probably be the most significant change that we had. Mr. Dance, in his suggestions, added a school zone and crosswalk approach, and then a pedestrian walking speed of no more than five miles per hour. So those were the main changes that you guys included, because I did clarify at the end, he had suggestions about age, and you guys went through and said, no, we want to keep the age at 11. So I did not do anything, those changes with the age that he suggested. The rest were typos, minor clarifications.
Okay. So do you think we went beyond what is intended by pen and ink changes on ordinances?
Well, I wouldn't call it pen and ink changes, I would call them minor changes.
Okay, minor changes. Okay, but we can, I have no problem with bringing it back next week and taking a look.
Same, same. You know...
Having a clean, kept up or...
Yeah. If we could show, you know, the red line from that previous version to what we changed, and that should make it clear.
I have no problem with that. Are you okay with that, Councilman Gembro?
Yeah, no issues with it. I just, I would just caution the council and, you know, second guessing decisions that have already been made, you know, what kind of precedence has that set? But I'm okay with bringing it back. Thank you.
I think I saw Mr. Webb comment somewhere online about, you know, but we can make minor changes in the final draft.
Yeah, I wanted to go back to...
Is that all you have, Vice Mayor?
Yes, and again, Councilman Gembro, I've already said very clearly, I do not intend on making any changes. This is just to be very transparent with the public about what we've done. I already made my position very clear on the ordinance, so there's nothing that I could even move to change, because I was not in the voting majority to begin with. So that wouldn't even be procedurally proper at this juncture.
Why don't you have? Thank you.
Mayor, just so I'm clear, so what it looks like on your agenda, because we've already released the agenda to you, so this isn't an item that's being heard, it's just going to be placed further down in your discussion, in city council discussion?
That's fine. You can put it, you can put it out there, you know, items, not only agenda, I don't care as long as you can take another look at it. You had a comment?
I had a comment back on Victoria's comments concerning the local problem, I believe, in Grand Haven, where I live. I'm pretty much aware of this issue. It's not a simple issue. It's one of those things, the reason you have CDDs and HOA rules, so they can handle them. Lawyers are already involved in this. It's a situation where the board made a change to the rules, and it got confusing, because some people didn't understand what the changes to the rules were, basically along the lines that if you live there, you can fish in the ponds, if you don't live there, you can't fish in the ponds. But it's not quite that simple, and it's being worked. I'll be at the meeting on Thursday, when this is going to come up. I think the lawyers are already involved.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yeah, I think I saw somebody on Facebook next door complaining about not being able to fish in a pond where he pays his mortgage and he's in the covenant.
It's become a significant issue.
Yeah. Some people don't like people fishing, so there's nothing you can do about that. All right, that's it from the council.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing. Also, with the animal services, we are, we also have added that to our list of state appropriation asks with the county. So we're trying to get some money for that as well, from the state.
Yeah, hopefully the state will help us out with facilitating that. Okay, we're going to move on. The presentations, one, Resolution 2025 approving the cultural art grants for fiscal year 2025-26.
Yes, Mayor, city council, while staff and the Flagler County Cultural Council is getting their presentation ready, just as a reminder, this, you approved the agreement with FC3 to oversee the cultural art grants for the city. And so Ms. Crouch will be reviewing the grants and the grant submissions and the, making a recommendations, making a recommendation for those awards.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Crouch, and I am with the Flagler County Cultural Council, and with me is our grant administrator, Julia Trullo. Can you hear me? Okay?
You can pull it closer to you.
Okay. Doesn't sound like it's coming out. Thank you, council and mayor, for allowing us to provide this service to the community. I'm thrilled to be able to tell you that all the grants were awarded, and I'm ready to show you exactly where the money is going. First of all, I just want to remind you that the Flagler County Cultural Council, also known as FC3, its mission is to advocate, support, and foster collaboration in the arts and humanities. We are a board comprised of members of the community representing arts, history, and culture. Here we are. We added Kathy Wilcox to our board this year, and our board appointees are Commissioner LeAnn Pennington, Commissioner Pam Richardson, Vice Mayor Teresa Pontieri, City of Flagler Beach Mayor Patty King, and Bonnell Mayor Catherine Robinson.
Can you go back that way for just a second, please?
Yes, sir.
And everybody knows I have some issues with the FC3. How much skin in the game do these other municipalities have in this game?
They have no voting authority.
No, I'm saying how much money has the other municipalities or the county given to the FC3?
They are putting money in next fiscal year.
Okay. So even at the city level or just the county?
The city level.
So Mayor Patty King's going to put money in her project?
And the city of Bonnell just awarded $7,000 to FC3 for a mural project that we're launching in Flagler County.
Okay. Because I think, I think, we don't need to be the only ones with skin in the game.
Exactly. Flagler Beach has, I think they believe, I believe they said that they were able to put in $5,000 next year towards this project.
Mayor, if I may, this was brought up, I brought this up, gosh, it might have been the first meeting that I was the liaison, maybe the second. It was very early on. I had brought up the fact that I felt that the other municipalities should also be contributing, since this is a countywide grant award, and they agreed. So I don't know, I wasn't aware of the exact amount, so thank you, Nancy, for that. But there was consensus among the members that that is a fair way to look at things.
So the City of Palm Coast Cultural Arts Grant... So the City of Palm Coast Cultural Arts Grant is to encourage and provide funding to community arts, history, and cultural organizations for programs and events. The scoring criteria hasn't changed. We project quality and merit, community engagement, organization's ability to accomplish the proposed project, and a minimum score of 80 is needed to, to get the funding.
Nancy, may I stop you, please?
Yes.
As I was looking at several of the slides, I noticed that there was reference to a project, the project. And I know from going through this last year, it seemed that there was a very large focus on whatever the grant's application was for, it needed to be focused on kind of an event.
Well, it's project is, is program or event.
Okay. So, and I only ask these questions because I, I don't know that it's very clear based on, and again, we don't have much to go on because we only had barely one full year of you all handling these. But going forward, is this going to be, can it be an ongoing program? Or does it need to be, because I think that needs to be very clear. To the extent it's not, maybe you all have cleared that up this year. But I don't know, kind of like when you announce, hey, these grants are available, what does that wording look like? In other words, is it very clear that it can be an ongoing program, or that it has to be a single project, a single event, etc.?
No, it can be an ongoing project or a repeat project.
No, no, no. I know year after year. But, and we'll get to a couple of the questions that I had about some of the grant awards, because I didn't feel, I didn't feel like, based on discussions of why certain grants were scrutinized a little bit harder last year, it felt like it was because the project or the event was unclear. That was...
Well, not only that, but I think the budget didn't match up to the marketing or the program itself.
That's a different issue. I specifically heard from, as a, as a criticism, and criticism is fine, but it needs to be consistent. So my only ask is that we're very consistent in the, in the communication. If the application can be done for a single project or a single event, and it can happen year after year, that's fine.
Right.
But that's very different than saying this is an ongoing program. In other words, I think there was one from, maybe it's the chorus where there's like seven different concerts. That's an ongoing program. That's not one event. That's not one project.
It's a series, just like a theater, as it's their season.
Okay. So again, I'm just asking that if, if that's going to be allowed, and I don't have an objection either way, we just need to be very clear about that communication and about that being an allowable grant program that can be applied for.
Yes.
And, I'm sorry, is that a change? Was that the case last year? It was, Julia's nodding her head. Okay.
But we can state it.
Yeah, if we could just be very clear about that.
Okay, we can do that. I don't think we've had any questions from the grantees about that, but we can make sure that we publicize it that way. So this was the scoring criteria. It still hasn't changed. It goes from five to 25. The project has high merit, but the potential for participants and audience to develop knowledge, skills, and understanding of arts, history, and art culture. I know you've probably seen and read these, so I can go through them rather quickly if you like. With the highest rating of 25 for excellent. The organization demonstrates the experience and capacity to make this project a reality. The organization demonstrates the importance of the project to the community. The project meets the needs of the community. The project shows growth for the organization and/or the community, building on the organization's mission and previous programming. The application illustrates a clear plan with reasonable timelines. The marketing and publicity plans are appropriate for the project, organization, and community. There is community involvement and support for the project through collaborations, financial support, or in-kind contributions. There is a clearly defined budget that will meet the needs of the project. The applicant completed all requirements and provided clear answers to all. They still get five points for that. So the grant review panel this year was Susie Gamblin from Flagler County Volunteer Services, who's very knowledgeable about grants and grant processes, Jay Shear from the Flagler County Cultural Council, Greg Feldman from the Flagler County Cultural Council, Patty King from Flagler County Cultural Council, and the mayor of Flagler Beach, and Deborah Morgan from the Tourism Office. Julia Trullo, sitting right behind me, what continued to be our grant administrator and the contact for all the grantees. We did make some tweaks to the process of the, we, we made some improvements to the grant process. We included an external experienced reviewer to participate, and that was Susie Gamblin. We require the grantee representative to attend a workshop to assist in the application process and address any questions or concerns. And we hosted three workshops, so three different dates for the grantees to come and, and actually sit down and go through the whole process so that there were any questions, that Julia was there to answer any questions and walk through the whole application process for them. Of the five final scores from the reviewers, the highest and the lowest scores were eliminated to attain an average. That's often done in state grants, actually. So these are the recommendations. The African American Cultural Society had an average panel score of 96.7 and a recommended grant amount of $12,000. Do you want me to read the grant purposes publicly, or you read them?
Please.
Okay. Grant purpose for the FY 2025-26 grant cycle, AACS will continue to offer impactful programs that center African American cultural heritage, public engagement, and youth involvement. Programming will include Black History Month, youth-focused events, signature cultural commemorations, and a continuation of the Smithsonian's Traveling Exhibition Flagler Food Culture. This grant will support the expansion and accessibility of these programs, particularly for underserved and intergenerational audiences.
So Nancy, I'm going to stop you because this is a perfect example. I have zero issue with saying African American Cultural Society is going to get a certain amount of money for XYZ program. This seems like we're funding AACS in a very broad and general way. Hold on, hold on, Julia, just one second, please. So I guess, to me, we're taking what should be an objective criteria, and we're making it subjective. And that's where I have some concerns. So I, I don't know how we tweak the grant process, but to say that we're, well, this is project-based, or it's a one program, that is absolutely not true.
They have a series of events, right, of programs.
Yeah, you say that, but you can say that about any organization. In other words, you can say that about any one of these, let's just use the next one, Palm Coast Historical Society. They have several different programs throughout the year where they could come and say, and, and the reason it's a concern is there's a limited pot of money, right? So any one of these organizations can say, look, I have all these programs that cost all this money. I need this grant. It doesn't work that way. Like, when we go to apply for a grant for the city, we don't say, we've got all these roads and we need general money for all of these roads. Well, it's only, it's only one set of things. It's, it's roads. It doesn't work that way. So I, it's my position, and I don't want to throw a wrench into this year's grants because it came in at $77,000, which is less money than we set aside, number one, but also less than we awarded last year. So we're not over budget. So from that perspective, I don't want to say that I'm not in favor of allowing these to move forward, but I think that we need to be more specific about what exactly we as a city, because these are taxpayer dollars.
Right.
What are we as a city going to fund? Because these types of organizations are supposed to be 503s that are run on private donations, things of that nature. They're, it's not a, the city should be paying for these programs or these organizations. And that's how this reflects currently, as it's, as it's presented. So, you know, I don't know if, if you all need to maybe work on the criteria, and then it needs to come back to us to approve for future grant processes. That's the consensus I would ask for from this board. But that's my feedback in general on what we're calling the program or the project. The second thing I would just wanted to know generally, and Julie, I'm sorry, I'll let you answer in a second. The, for the grant amounts, were there any grant applications that were submitted where the total grant amount was not awarded? Okay, so every one of these grant amounts, the amount that was awarded was amount that was asked for consistently across the board?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Julia, go ahead. If you could come up to a mic so that the people listening online can hear you.
Thank you, Julia Trullo. So let me explain a little about your concern, and maybe this will help you understand. So these grants are program-specific, but we did not tell them they could only apply for one program at a time, because we have many of your major cultural institutions here, the Flagler Auditorium, et cetera, are applying for various programs within their season. But in each application, they are specific expenses for programs. There's no operational money in there at all. There's no overhead. There's no admin costs. There's no, nothing for running the business. So we're not paying for desks and chairs, or, or copies, or telephones. Everything that is in each application is specific to a program. That's generally how programming grants work. If you do look at the state's version of this, it's exactly the same. You list, for theaters, I've written a lot of theater grants, you list, I'm doing show A, show B, so show C, right? And then once I list that, I say, within each of these productions, I am going to spend your money on hiring actors, building scenery, right? I'm not spending it on paying the guy who cleans the building, or on the guy who runs the company. So that's how our grant is laid out. It's, it's an, almost an exact mirror of, in fact, it's a little more specific than the Palm Coast, the City of Palm Coast paper grant that we took over. We incorporated that grant.
Yeah, and let me be very clear. I appreciate you all taking this over because I think you're probably handling it better, and with people who have more subject matter expertise than the city was. So I thank you for that. I know there's been a lot of time put into it by the panel members, so I appreciate it. Is, and we're only talking about AACS because they happen to be first in the slideshow.
Right.
But I am going to use them as a further example, because when you say, you know, normally it's done show one, show two, show three. Completely agree with that. But those are specific, right? Show one, show two, show three. Here, we have impactful programs that center African American cultural heritage, public engagement, youth involvement. And there's really only one specific event that is listed, and that is the Traveling Expedition Flagler Food Culture. And the, so maybe it's a communication thing. Maybe you all just need to communicate it better.
It's our fault, actually, not a, not the organization's...
I don't think it is their fault, yeah.
Because when we asked, so on the grant, I don't know if you've read through the grants, but the grant, we asked them to say, give us a two-sentence overview of what you're doing with your money. And then they, they filled that in, and then they attached a full worksheet with specifics. But we in...
We can give you more specifics.
We certainly can give you all the specifics.
We can give you the whole application.
But the, when, when Nancy and I were putting this slideshow together, we went, oh, let's just put the, we'll just put the overview in there.
Yeah, no, I...
It's faster.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to kind of like pump the brakes during this, but I think based on some of the issues that we've kind of had in the transition from the city handling it to FC3 handling it, my effort is to be as transparent as possible. And so with that, I would say that for future presentations, and, you know, just moving forward in the process, because as you all said, you've already made improvements, which I appreciate, let's be very clear about what the grants can go to, but also very clear about what specific events and programs they're being awarded for.
Well, I understood that they were being distributed, the grants themselves were being included in your packets. I, maybe I was wrong. But it is easy for us to come up with a bullet point for you.
Okay, thank you.
So is this amount, is, do they have to match that amount?
Yes.
So they're matching?
Yes.
A hundred percent match?
Hundred percent match.
Right.
And none of this money is distributed in advance. They are all reimbursement grants. So they have to submit receipts and proof of payment in order to, to receive any money back.
Yeah, we'll get to that later. I got a, I got a point to make on that.
Mayor and City Council, and just as a reminder, this is the workshop, so approving the resolution and seeing the grant, all of those as included in your next agenda packet for those.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
I just went back and reviewed the contract between FC3 and the city, and it does say that FC3, FC3's purview is creating the grant proposal and all of that. Would you like us to include the grant proposal in future contracts so we know what kind of grants that they're giving out when we are approving the FC3 contract for them to administer the grants? Because that's not in the contract right now. It just says that they'll create a grant, but you don't know what kind of program that they're creating.
Yeah, I, I don't want to, to micromanage to that level, particularly because a lot of these organizations are going to have different needs for their programming. My point was that if, all right, last year, when we were going through this process, there was an issue with regards to what specifically had to be listed in the application as far as what the grant monies were going to be used for, that it needed to be event-based or project-based. If that is not, the current communication, and it's very clear that it can be this kind of ongoing program model, great. If that's not being properly communicated, then it needs to be. I'm not saying that we need to, in the contract delineate that. I'm just asking that the criteria for the grant application be very clear for those who are applying.
Yes, ma'am, and I, I see that on page five of their grant application that they have on their website.
I'd also like to point out that we're, on this one here specifically, we're talking about just this one here. It's on stuff that's going on throughout the year. But last year, we gave the Historic Society such a hard time getting their done, saying they had to change their date, that it had to be done before the end of the fiscal year. So if it's, if it's money that is dedicated to, for a purpose, what does it matter if you run up against the wall as far as the, the...
Oh, I would love that.
The fiscal calendar, because it's designated for that. It doesn't matter if it's on, you know, September 30th or October 25th. So...
Those were not, those were not our guidelines.
Ma'am, don't interrupt me, please. So we got to make sure that we're not shortchanging, you know, the people that are trying to apply for these grants.
Mayor, that's, that's my decision that I made, because that's a financial, the way we're operating the city is we're not rolling over money from year to next year. If the organization wanted to apply for the next year's funding, then that next year's funding would become available, but it needed to stay within that calendar year. And yes, a calendar year typically goes from January to December, but for us, a calendar year is October through September. So we're asking the groups, if you're getting money in that year, use it in that year. And that's our financial practices.
That's fine, but I don't think we have to, we, we, as a policy, we don't have to do it like that, because you know that money is allocated for something. It's, it's not going to change, you know?
But it's not allocated for the next year.
No, that's like with everything that we approve, Mayor. I mean, we may have, you know, contracts that we approve year after year, but until like, that's why last week we had all those things on the consent, because it's almost guaranteed that we're going to agree to it, because we've been agreeing to it. But they can't technically do it until we approve the budget.
Is that all? We can continue on? Continue on, Ms. Crouch.
City of Palm Coast Historical Society, it got an average panel score of 90 and recommended grant amount of $2,013 for Founder's Day, October 25th, 2025. And they want to incorporate a Halloween into the theme for event by making the museum spooktacular. Our volunteers will dress in costumes, they say. The museum will be making its debut with some new artifacts from the early 1800s plantation era. They have a guest speaker, Mark Adams, park ranger from Bureau State Park, will speak on our rich orientation, plantation history and the cultural history of Tamukwun indigenous people.
See, that's a specific event with a specific dollar amount. And I think that's what the Vice Mayor is talking about.
Correct.
Right. So if they wanted to apply for a program, a whole series of programs, they could do that. The City Repertory Theater had an average panel score of 100, recommended grant amount $11,186. And again, its CRT is requesting support for its 25, 26, 15th anniversary season. Grant monies received will be used to underwrite artists' fees, production costs, and marketing for seven productions between October and August. Community Chorus of Palm Coast... Community Chorus of Palm Coast, average panel of 87.7, recommended grant amount of $10,080. And there, again, holiday and spring concert seasons provide chorus members in the community with events to celebrate the beginning of the seasons through music. Each concert is designed to educate and entertain members and audiences through a variety of musical styles, from classical folk, gospel, Broadway musicals, secular and sacred, and a brief history of the composer and circumstances within which it was written. Over the past 15 years, chorus membership and audiences have grown as the value has grown. Flagler Auditorium Governing Board, average panel score of 98, recommended grant amount of $12,000. Again, they want to provide a variety of entertainment for the community, educational opportunities for youth in the arts, develop performing arts learner ambitions in Flagler County students, and support arts education. Provide unique student experiences onstage and backstage for students. Host performing arts events such as Florida band assessments, chorus, dance, theater, and community shows. Hispanic American Cultural Society, they had a fantastic event last year. They outgrew their space, and so they're going to move it now to Town Center. They had an average panel score of 88, recommended grant amount of $8,520. And it will be their second annual Hispanic Food and Arts Fest of Palm Coast on May 30th at Park Street in the Town Center on Central Avenue. They'll have a variety of Hispanic food trucks and food vendors from different Hispanic countries, as well as a variety of arts and craft vendors. They'll have live music, folk dancers with several local artists as well as others. Last year was a total success, and they intend to create a bigger one in Town Center.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Hey, can we go? Go back.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I just wanted to say again, this is another example of a specific event. And I attended this event last year. It was fantastic. The food was incredible. The live South Sudan and music that they had was just fantastic. So, you know, I think this is indeed something that's going to continue to grow. So, but again, this is, to the vice mayor's point, this is a specific event, you know, one-time shot for this organization. Thank you.
So since we stopped, I'm going to kind of piggyback. So I'm looking at the PDF that's on the FC3 website where there's the criteria for these applications. And it says, basic eligibility, and this is on page one of six. There's some criteria listed. I'm only going to talk about the ones that are relevant to this subject. It says, events and programs must take place within the City of Palm Coast. Are we sure that all of these take place in the city and not the county?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so with the expansion of the funding coming from the City of now Flagler County, are we okay, board, with expanding these to all of the county then if they are going to have skin in the game?
I'd have to see that come to fruition before.
One, and then two, if we're talking about kind of an uneven, you know, distribution of funds, right? You know, if we're putting in 80,000 and they're putting in 10,000, but half the projects then go into those areas, then it seems like we're funding events in Bonnell, for instance, or Flagler Beach. So I don't know if I would. In fact, and something, because you brought it up, something that I was thinking about is, you know, Town Center is meant to be a center of culture for the city. And, you know, one of our problems in terms of the commercial development is foot traffic and things like that. I'd be in favor of even giving, you know, points bonuses or something like that for the usage of Town Center for some events, for some of these applications, just because it creates more down here, right? And it incentivizes, we've got, you know, these commercial spaces coming online here in the future, and when they see events and people out there walking and large things happening, it makes them want to move in, right? And provide more commercial opportunities for our city and create this critical mass in Town Center that continues to grow. So I don't know if it's something that can be built in that would, you know, the usage of Town Center to further the activation and the usage of these commercial properties in Town Center as a purpose. But that's something I'd be in favor of, is making sure that Town Center is utilized as much as possible so that, you know, we can incentivize businesses to build here.
Mr. Miller, just to answer that, that is a article in the agreement with FC3 that they would partner with the city and utilize the stage in Town Center. And I know that Ms. Crouch and FC3 encourage whenever we're having events to have these cultural art groups to perform at the stage. And we host quarterly or biannually art festivals within the park where the cultural art groups are also required, AKA very voluntarily nicely to come participate in those events. And that's been an ongoing partnership that we've had for the last several years. I think before FC3 was even FC3, we've been trying to encourage that momentum here in Town Center.
So I think just moving forward, if we are going to ask other municipalities in the Flagler, in Flagler County to contribute monies, then we need to have the intent on, let's just say they contribute 20%, then should 20%, to the extent there's applications for it, up to 20% of the grant go to, you know, possibly outside of the City of Palm Coast. We don't have to make that decision now.
Right.
But I think it's something to think about.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a fair assessment of how, or proposal for how it might need to go. Obviously, we can talk about that later and define that as part of the next year's.
I just don't want us to go back to the board and say, hey, we'll take your money, but then you don't get any grants.
Yeah, no, obviously. And for them, you know, they likely would not be happy about that either, right?
Correct, yeah. So just if we're looking at this eligibility, it says, applications must be based on the event expense budget only, like you stated, Julia. And then, a single application may be submitted for multiple events, as you stated, Nancy. I think what we're missing here, and then the next bullet point, I don't want to not be complete, the next bullet point says, programs, services, and events must be open to the public. So this indicates that it could be programs, it could be services, and it could be multiple events. Maybe the criteria needs to specifically state that if we have multiple events, programs, or services, they do need to be specifically delineated in the application. And the amount of funding that is being asked for needs to be delineated as well, because to the point that you were making, that these are reimbursable, we don't know, or I guess we can't fairly determine whether or not certain programs should be reimbursed for if they're not specifically split out and delineated. So that, to me, needs to be the very specific criteria for when we look at, you know, going forward, what they're asking money for and whether or not they're reimbursable.
Okay, we do that, but we can make it more clear.
I just have one.
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure we understand, this 100,000, which is, we're not going to use all of this year, is coming specifically from Palm Coast. I would be careful about the 20%. In other words, we would still, next year, and a year after, and a year after, unless we change that, would be saying there's $100,000 available for grants. I think those grants should go to things in Palm Coast.
You want to keep it city-specific.
City-specific. So if Bonnell or City of Flagler Beach adds money, they may want to make a similar agreement with the Flagler Council of FC3, say, we'll use it for primary facilities, unless we say it's okay to do it someplace else. But I don't think we, that 20%, I don't agree with that because the money, 100,000, is Palm Coast.
Well, that would be essentially the same thing, whether we're not co-mingle and they have a separate agreement or whatever.
20% of it can go to...
If they're contributing 20% of the monies.
Then we'll have 110,000.
That's 10, that's less than 10%.
Is that what you're saying, though? What I'm saying is the 100,000 is coming from Palm Coast taxes.
Right.
Correct.
If we get money from Bonnell, we'll be saying that we now have 110,000.
That's the way I envision it, yes. But again, we're not always using the full 100,000 either. But I mean, we're talking about a hypothetical. I just don't want the messaging to the other, our neighbors to be, we're going to take your money, but not going to give you any grants. That's it.
That's what I'm trying to say. But I think right now, it's city-specific.
Yes. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what I got from what the vice mayor was saying, is that if they add to the amount, then they can only utilize the amount they add in their city. And we use ours in our city.
But you may want to, you know, do it all together. In that case, they'd have to... And like I said, we still have to see if that comes to fruition. Right, right. If they pony up some money. Okay, Ms. Crouch, continue on.
Okay, let's see, where was I?
Flagler County Education Foundation.
Flagler County Education Foundation had an average panel score of 98.5, recommended grant amount of $10,000. Last year, they did the Josh Cruz Writing Project, creative writing program that honors the memory of a local student, resident Josh Cruz, a local who loved reading and writing. It provides after-school writing clubs for students in grades four through 12 in Flagler County. The program culminates in the publication of an anthology of student writing, giving young people the experience of being a published author. And they did publish a book, and it's a great book, and the students are now published, these small, these elementary students can say that they're a published author now. It's an amazing thing for these kids.
Okay, on this one here, this is a specific. We just approved the last cycle, when did we approve the last cycle of grants, Vice Mayor?
It was later, it was...
Vice Mayor, City Manager, when was that, January, February?
It was in the spring.
Yes, sometime in the spring.
Okay, so that money came from last year's budget. For this year, this calendar year, 2025, have they already conducted this project for 2025?
Yes.
Okay. And I requested some receipts from Helena, and there was one receipt for like, I forgot how much, eight, $9,000. It said, contract services with the schools. I'm kind of like, I know what that was.
That's to pay the teachers for their time for facilitating these after-school clubs.
Like a composition or writing teacher would stay, and there's a club that learns how to write, and they practice writing, and then it culminates in like a short story that then they publish in this book.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that.
Side note, if you don't have this book, which I think all council members were given a copy, it's super cute. I love it. I love this project. I think this is something that should really empower students and get them interested in reading and writing. It's actually on my nightstand because when I'm bummed, like, I read one of those stories because they're just so dagum cute. So I really appreciate this from the Flagler County Education Foundation. And I meant to piggyback on what you said also, Councilman Gembaro, the event by the Hispanic Society is great as well. All of these events, I think, have lent really great contribution to our community, and I want to see it continue to move forward. I just want to be very, very clear and transparent about the process.
And with the increased funding, they are able to do so much more. Palm Coast Music Festival, the Songwriters Festival, had an average panel score of 99.5, recommended grant amount of $12,000. It's the eighth annual event. In April of 2026, the festival brings over 45 hit songwriters with over 175 number-one hits to their credit. They tell stories behind their songs and perform them in an intimate setting for the attendees. This event happens over the course of five days, including a preview show on April 22nd with the major shows at the Daytona State College Palm Coast Amphitheater, April 23rd to 26th this year, or next year, along with a few other shows at local restaurants in Hammock Beach Resort.
Okay, so the Palm Coast, Palm Coast Musical Festival, Songwriters Festival, is that a, that's a nonprofit? That's a 501(c)(3), a separate entity?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This event is a great event, and I don't know what the numbers are in terms of economic impact, but they're, you know, it drives a lot of people to this town for a week straight, at least.
And it's nice for residents to come too, because the amphitheater at Daytona State is such a gem. I feel like it's hidden back there and doesn't get utilized as much. And I know the school just invested a bunch of money into, but it's just such a beautiful venue.
And this is an example, you know, trying to drive things to Town Center, this is an example of an event that can't be done in Town Center, so to speak, like it can be done there.
Tried, right, Nancy?
We tried, a couple of years, yes.
You know, same thing with the auditorium and some of the other things, you know, they have specific venue requirements.
That's it.
And we will be voting on these next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I've asked our team to make sure all pertinent information is in your agenda packet, so when we modify the agenda to include the e-bike ordinance, you'll see an additional link for anything regards to the FC3 grants.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do we have any follow-up questions up from the council? You ladies, stay put, okay? We got to open it up for public comment.
Sure.
Okay, we're going to open this item up for public comment if anyone has anything to say. Yes, Ms. Chantel.
All right, I'm going to argue on the basic of principle. I love arts, I really do. But if the city has loans that still needs to be paid back, what in the world is the city doing, giving away money it doesn't have in the bank? So I believe the city is spreading itself too much, helping groups that should be self-founded. My understanding is, it probably passed a new budget this year for next year. But at some point, why not take a breath and think about it and stop it until all the debt of the city is paid back? We have, what you're talking about, $100,000 for that, and $80,000 for something else, and a rec center here, and a golf course there. I mean, it just adds up. This is too much. Please think about it next time you do your budget. It's not fair for the people. Those groups, they're wonderful, but they should be self-founded. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dice. Any follow-ups from anyone?
No, sir.
I'll just say quickly, I think part of the reason, particularly when you look at some of the larger events like the Songwriters Festival, the economic impact that's created by giving some of these funds, making some of these funds available is very important. But also, if you look at data about economic vitality, where companies are looking to move their businesses, bring their employees, et cetera, there is something to be said for cultural arts in the community. It does have a real positive impact, and I'm sure there's data on this, I've read it, about, you know, when you have a strong cultural community, a strong arts community, it does improve the, there's value add to the community. So I understand wanting to be fiscally responsible. I think we are very fiscally responsible on this board, and I understand wanting to get out of debt before you, what you're probably considering, Chantel, is like a luxury. But I don't look at this as a luxury. I mean, this is 80 grand this year of investment. That's the way I look at this. I look at this as investment into the community. So, you know, as we move forward and we have to prioritize, we always look at every line item on our budget. And I'll continue to consider this as, not as a rubber stamp, this will never get my rubber stamp. I mean, you know, I'm already thinking about, oh, you know, we came in $20,000 under, can we put that towards, you know, something that is maybe considered by many more of a necessity? So I get every penny counts, but I do look at this as something that is important for the economic vitality of our community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Just a final comment. I agree with everything the vice mayor said. And I think it is important. Arts are part of a community. And when you go out and do any kind of research or anything else, it always shows up as something that people look forward to when they're in their community. And the only thing that worries me a little is the fact that even with saying all that, we still were like $23,000 short of what was possible. So at this point, there's nothing more we'll be able to do. Once we make the vote, that's it.
Yes.
We can't take that $23,000 and add it somehow to the coming year. I'd say the answer's no, but I just want to make sure. Well, I would consider the answer no, too, because I had someone from the Cambodian Society hit me up today and asking about monies within the community. And I said, our grants were just concluded. We're getting ready to, you know, go over them tonight.
One year ago.
Yeah, so but as more people become aware of the program, they're going to be able to apply, and hopefully you ladies can facilitate them getting involved and getting, you know, what they can out of it. So we'll have to see how it goes forward. Anything else? Okay.
Just to echo what, you know, was said earlier, is that you think about where you go to spend your money, right? And it's places that have arts and culture and, you know, good food and things like that. So as the vice mayor said, it is an investment in the community to attract people to these events in our community.
Yeah, just as a quick stat, so approximately 76% of U.S. leisure travelers participate in cultural or heritage activities while on vacation. So that's a really large chunk. People look for these types of events and things to do while on vacation. So I think that's just important to remember for our community.
And as a side note, I do have those statistics, not with me, but I do have those statistics specific to Flagler County.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you, ladies, and we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is...
Backyard chickens.
I was trying to figure out a clever way to say it.
And we're all over the gamut, we just went from cultural arts grants to backyard chickens.
Chickens.
Very diverse.
Mayor, City Council, as per your request, we launched the pilot program, and staff is coming back before you to let you, give you an update on the pilot program, how many permits we've had. You know, we did have some challenges that, along the way, but I think we've got at least 18 people who have come into compliance with chickens, and we're prepared to take your direction on next steps. There was a draft ordinance included in your agenda packet, so if you wanted us to say yes, move this to a future agenda, and have some comments for the ordinance for Marcus, because he loves those, we are prepared for that. Ms. Barbara, Heather, I'll let you take it away.
Thank you, ma'am. Barbara, what I'm going to ask, one question, let's start this off. How many hawks have got a chicken so far?
I can't answer that, sir.
Hawks or bobcats?
Well, we got a, we got a bunch of hawks in my neighborhood, and I haven't seen any chickens, so, you know.
It would be a sight though, a hawk flying through the air with a chicken.
I've had a red-tailed hawk out in Oklahoma try to take our Pomeranian.
Well, I have two dachshunds, believe me, when I'm outside, I'm making sure, one of them, he won't be picked up, but the other one could, so I'm always on alert, too. Good morning, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to introduce Heather, pardon me? Heather Priestap, she's an animal control officer. So, good evening, Mayor, City Council, Barbara Grossman, Code Enforcement Manager, with Heather, and I'm here tonight as a follow-up to the request to create the backyard chicken program. The online portal began on June 18th, 2025. There are some of the regulations that were put into place during the pilot program. This pilot program has experienced low participation rate, has received a couple of complaints. As of October 1st, there were 23 applications received during the pilot program. Two permits expired and therefore were not issued. Continuing with the regulations, the limit was to issue 50 permits. The city has only issued 21, and there are no other in the port hole, port hole as of today. The size and setback regulations were put in place during this time. An animal control officer would complete an onsite inspection prior to issuing the permit to make sure the regulations were followed. So once they called in for an inspection, then the animal control officer would go out and create the inspections and finalize the permit. For the convenience of our residents, the online portal was created to submit applications. However, some applicants did experience some challenges, the submitting of a complete application during the pilot program. For example, when you have an incomplete application submitted online, it must be returned to the applicant for resubmission, for review, and will take place during, if the application is complete. Not every application had to be resubmitted. The applications received did not require a resubmital. There was one application that had to be reviewed at least four times by multiple staff to assist the residents. These are some of the approved coops that we've inspected. Again, another coop and above fencing is required around the coop, and like I said, some people will put fencing all the way around their yard, other people will put fencing around the coop itself to keep it opaque from the adjacent property owners.
Okay, so in terms of this fencing, what you're saying is that if there, you don't have a backyard fence already, then they're required to screen that so the neighboring guards can't see it?
Right, and they could do that with landscaping to make it completely opaque, or a fencing of some, of some type. And that's why we said it's kind of like an above-ground pool, you're not always going to have fencing all around the yard, you could have it just around the fence, same concept for the chicken coops. This is a coop that was not in compliance but has been brought into compliance after the four staff reviews and two inspections. The multiple reviews were due to the applicant not completing the requirements in accordance with the city's backyard chicken pilot program.
And blocking a window, emergency exit.
Pardon me?
And blocking a window, an emergency exit.
Yes, but that was taken care of through the chief building official. Another used a bamboo fence, however, that was not in compliance with the regulations, and this one has been since brought into compliance because that's not an approvable fencing material. Here are some of the proposed options, to bring the draft ordinance in the pack up to council for consideration, extend the pilot program, or make no changes to the code. And any questions?
Okay, when do we start issuing permits, Barbara?
June 18th.
June 18th, okay, so it's like, half a year?
Four months. Four months.
I'd say we extend it for a full year, the pilot with the permits. How many, we said 50 permits?
50 permits, and right now we have 23, and two of the permits were, so 21 were finalized, and two were not issued because they're, they expired due to not asking us to come out for an inspection.
Me personally, I would say extend the pilot program for a year, upping the number of permits up to 100. I know I said it back in the day, we will never have more than 100 people that gets permits for backyards. It's just not going to happen, there's too many predators in Florida. So that's, what are you, what?
Hey, Mr. Mayor?
I was trying to clarify how many permits we have already asked, or we've gotten so far, that's all.
Go ahead, Mr. Gambero.
Thank you, sir. Now, I'm looking at this from, you know, the time that our code enforcement's putting it, putting in to bring folks into compliance. Also, you know, we're not even at 50% utilization. You know, should we pass an ordinance for something that's not even being utilized at You know, all of us were lobbied, and you know, we heard our residents out on this issue because we thought there was a great demand for it, but I'm not seeing that demand, so for me, I'm not in favor of moving forward with an ordinance. Over.
That's, that's why I suggested continuing the pilot program, Councilman. That's, that was my point, was trying to just extend the pilot to see, you know, what kind of traction it gets over a calendar year, or a fiscal year for the, for the city, from October to September 30th next year, but I'm welcome, I'm welcome to any feedback from you guys.
All right, I have a question for you. You had mentioned a couple of complaints, can you talk about those? You know, how many were there, and what were the chief complaints?
As, as far as with the public, some of the complaints, well, most of the complaint is the noise.
Noise.
I mean, you can see that these people have done a really good job at doing their coops.
Yeah.
I mean, they've, they've...
No, they're not.
They've done, they've taken pride, and they've called in through for their inspections. We had a couple of glitches, we got the glitches taken care of. If there were issues with the portal, we would go out to them and speak with them, you know, via telephone or whatever, so, like I said, that's why I wanted to show you the pictures.
So do we feel like the complaints that we did receive were addressed, and those, those people that complained are now happy with the situation? Some yes, some no?
Yeah, some yes, some no.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're going to have that anytime.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I mean, we're moving forward likely with, you know, allowing work vehicles and driveways, there's going to be people that are unhappy about that too. So you live in a, you know, you live in a neighborhood, that's what happens, I mean, unless you want to move to an HOA. For me, I, I won't push back hard about extending the pilot program, I don't want to do it for a year, I would say maybe a few more months at the most. I think that we move forward with the ordinance, particularly, you know, we talked about property rights, we put some very reasonable limitations on what we're doing here. When, when Councilman Gambero says there's been time and effort put in by staff, well, you do that when you go inspect a pool, and there's people who aren't in compliance with all kinds of things that we have to go back out for and do re-inspections, driveway aprons, I mean, all kinds of things. So I don't, I don't look at this as being something that is so much, so unduly burdensome that we should not move forward with the ordinance. To the extent council would like to move forward with the ordinance, I do have some things that I would like to make proposed changes to in the ordinance itself. I mean, we have to get through, you know, step one, which is, are we going to nix it? Are we going to extend the pilot program, or are we going to work on the ordinance? But I would be in favor of going ahead and moving forward based on property rights, and it has nothing to do with being lobbied. I think that people should be able to do this in their, in their, on their properties to this very reasonable extent with these guardrails that we've placed.
Yeah, I'd go along, I would say extend the pilot program for six months. During that period, start to draft an ordinance, a possible ordinance, no longer than that, and to keep the numbers the same.
Okay, and our pilot program night, right now, is at six months. That's what was established the last time we were here.
So it'll continue for a couple of months.
And we changed, we changed, this is just an update, and that we went from 20 permits to 50 permits, is what was originally.
Originally, yeah.
Originally, it was, yeah. Originally, it was a year and 20 permits, and you changed it to six months and 50 permits.
For me, honestly, the low number makes it somewhat of a non-issue for me, that it isn't causing, you know, undue burden on residents within the city and things like that. So I don't have a problem either with the ordinance, trying to move forward with it, or extending the pilot program. The thing I would say about extending the pilot program would be information finding, we're doing a pilot to try to see how this works for us, so during that time, let's find the things that maybe we need to change about how we're doing things. So that first ordinance that we do right doesn't need to be corrected over time, multiple times, and things like that.
We only had two roosters on the loose, so they probably, when they went to get their coops, and, yeah, two roosters.
One on the north end and one on the south end.
One at Aldi's and one on the south.
I think I've heard both of them. So this...
Mr. Mayor?
This is your draft here, Marcus?
That's correct.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll support extending the pilot program.
Okay, so can we get consensus to extend it, and we'll start looking in April? Give it six...
Another...
Another six months with the 50?
So that'll get better.
And that'll, that'll give us a full year, and then in April, if we, we got the draft here, we can go, we can keep it and review it, and make changes?
Can I ask a question? I'm going to stay in my lane, but as your attorney who's been working with Ms. Grossman and her staff, what changes do you think's going to happen in another six months? My only question is that you have an ordinance already written that we based off other municipalities, so I guess just maybe giving us a little direction, the staff, that, you know, we go out and do your marching orders, what direction, what changes do you think you anticipate?
Let me ask you this, Barbara, how much, how many man-hours have you had to commit to enforcing this?
How long does your inspections take?
Inspections don't take too, too long, but I've, I've had to follow up a lot with emails and getting people to call in and get the inspections done before the permit expires. People that I know that were serious about it, who had, who had applied, and they just were sitting ready and not paid for, I've sent several emails to multiple people, letting them know their permit's going to expire if they don't call in for an inspection. So that timing is a little more than doing the inspections themselves.
But it hasn't been a real burden?
It just adds to what I'm already doing.
Whatever you're already doing.
So I'm, I'm sorry, on that, should we extend the time for the permit? I mean, is it, is this a process issue, or is it, because you said...
They have 30 days to apply. Once they apply and add in all their paperwork, they have 30 days to pay for it, and, yeah.
To pay for it, take their, isn't it, take their class? I mean, what all do they have to do in that 30-day period?
Most of them have all that.
Okay.
You know, so, I mean, if they, and if they need an extension, it's not like we can't give an extension at times, but when you get no response, that's when it expires. So if somebody was to come in and say, you know, I'm going to be another week because I'm, and I am taking this maintenance class, and we've honored anybody, anywhere, that they've taken a nag, Minnesota, wherever, it doesn't have to be in Flagler County, and a lot of them already have this because they're already doing chickens, they...
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, I, it seems to me, you know, following up is a courtesy that you're doing, it doesn't have to be done. If they don't do what they're supposed to do within that 30-day period, then their permit expires.
Yep, we could be that way, too.
To the point.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to...
Go ahead, Councilman Gambero.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to answer Mr. Duffy's question. So what, you know, what will change in six months? Well, if we have 50 out of 50 applications, well, that's a big deal, right? I mean, I think that for me, kind of changes the equation on, are we getting full utilization out of this? And so, you know, and if, if that's, that's what happens, and we've got 50 applications, and everybody in full compliance, I think that'll change the dynamic on whether or not we go forward on this, at least from my perspective.
I think to the city attorney's point to, I'm sorry, Ms. Sullivan, let me get this out before I forget it, people may not be as, you know, positive about doing it because they know it's only a pilot program. So to your point, attorney, if we went ahead, got the ordinance done, and still the same permitting, right? They still have to pay the fee to get the permit?
That's correct.
So we'll, we'll see how it pans out after that. So what did you have, Mr. Sullivan?
Well, my point is, if we voted no change to code, the people who already have gotten their permits and put the coops in their yards theoretically have to remove them.
Within two, I think it's two years after, after the permit is issued, it was two years, I'm pretty sure that's what it was. Well, and I was going to kind of, that's after the mayor's comment, I wanted you to get your comment out, Councilman Sullivan, but that's kind of where, where my head was at, is where, you know, people may be hesitant because they're going, well, I don't even know if this is going to go through yet, I mean, I don't know, I totally forgot that it was two years, I don't know that...
I did hear that, because just chicken, starting at chickens, it's, even the stuff at Tractor Supply, it's expensive.
It is, it is, yeah.
And then that's what I was going to add, though, like, this conversation about maybe the 30 days, or what processes could we change potentially in the ordinance, we don't know because we're not doing it. So you guys would know functionally where the pain points are, right? And so those are the kind of suggestions we would need to, to potentially make some changes, and that's why potentially six more months could give us some more information about those things.
Yeah, I'm just not in favor of pushing it six more months. I mean, I think that we've still got two months left in the pilot program, I do think that we have, there's only a few changes that I would suggest in the ordinance, I think that in the next two months, let's go ahead and get this off our plate. We know we haven't had a ton of resident complaints, we haven't had this influx of, you know, predators in people's backyards, because all of the hyperbole that came with potential chickens has not come to fruition. So, you know, I'm in favor of moving forward, knock on wood. I'm in favor of moving forward while we have two more months in this pilot program. And then, look, if in that two months, something catastrophic happens in the world of chickens, and we decide not to move forward with the ordinance, we don't have to. But I think we, we set out a six-month pilot program, let's stick to it, and let's work on getting this thing across the finish line.
I could go with both of those, so...
All right, I have no problem with going forward with the ordinance, you, Councilman? Councilman Gambero, you have no problem moving forward with writing the ordinance and having it done?
I'm in favor of extending the pilot program.
Okay, he's the odd man out. What changes did you want to make, Vice Mayor?
So, are we going to stick with the maximum of 50 permits on a first-come, first-serve?
All right, just one, I want to make sure we got clarification.
Consensus to move forward with the ordinance?
Yeah, was it consensus to move forward, the ordinance or consensus to move forward two months?
Well, the pilot program, keeping the pilot program in place while we're finalizing the ordinance, I think is what council decided, right?
We haven't really decided on what type of month yet.
But looking at the future agenda, if it's scheduled for the 1st of December, that meets both objectives, where it's heard and it's kind of the conclusion of the pilot program in December, so it kind of meets both of those.
Transition right into the ordinance.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we got that.
Otherwise, if we don't get it read in time, would we have to extend the pilot program essentially?
Yes.
Okay.
Not a problem, but...
What changes did you have, Vice Mayor?
So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, are we sticking with 50 permits?
I think that's appropriate, I mean, we're not using those right now.
Yeah, there's 22.
We got two more months to find out if...
Yeah, I would say, I don't think 100 permits is going to kill anybody, you know, I mean, I think 100 permits in a city of 107,000 residents, 40,000 infill lots is pretty reasonable to extend it to 100, so, just so that we don't have to come back. I mean, if we get to a max of 50, technically, we'd have to amend the entire ordinance to extend it, so I would suggest 100 permits. And then my only other big issue was on number four, no, I'm sorry, number five. It says, "The permit shall provide authorization for the animal control inspector to conduct inspections of the premises and the chickens without notice on an as-needed basis." I absolutely will not agree with that. I think there are a lot of code violations that occur in people's backyards. I think there are a lot of code violations that occur in people's backyards all the time, yet we don't give Carp Blanche authority for code enforcement to go into somebody's property without notice. We were just talking about it today, Barbara, clippings in the canal. We know, you know, there's dumping.
It's different.
So.
The, the one thing I, I have to, you know, we do, we do wellness checks.
Okay.
We don't call people, because by the time when we do call them and we get there to do wellness check, guess what we smell the most of? Bleach. Okay? They're getting noticed. So the idea is not, not that we're out to do punitive damage, not that, we're making sure you keep your four hens, that you're not putting three of the hens in the house. That's one of the complaints that I have, when they, they have more than four chickens. So when you give them and say, "I'll be there at 2:30," four hens are out and the other three are in the house.
And one more thing to add on that, ma'am. So for, like, say if we did go this route, we, knock on wood, we never have to actually enforce it.
Right.
But we, we would have to get a, like, injunction from a judge to actually get into the property. Where, like, if a homeowner refuses us, then we would have to go to a judge, and ask for a special injunction for him to grant us authority to go in there with a deputy. It's not like we could just walk right in.
So if you were to go to a, a property that's fenced, you would show up without notice, knock on the door, have them give you access to the backyard? You can't just walk into the backyard?
Exactly. No, we're not walking into the backyard.
Okay, okay. That makes me feel a lot better, 'cause I saw this, and I was like, oh, no, we can't allow.
No, we're not doing that.
And if that were, were to occur, they denied entry, that would.
Then we'd go through the courts.
Well, that would place their permit in jeopardy, right?
Yeah, that'd be the permit, and, but then we would, if we would need to see there was an emergency, then we'd go the court route, to go that route.
Yes, you're right on, revoking is a possibility, yes.
Is that the only thing you have, Vice Mayor?
Sorry, there was one more, and I swear this is only one more. Paragraph eight on page 6 of 6 of the ordinance, "Any person found to be in violation of any provision of this article shall have their permit immediately revoked and shall immediately surrender their chickens to animal control." I find that to be kind of harsh. I mean, so you're telling me if there's a, you know, I don't know, let's say they don't have a, yeah, fencing issue, or they don't have a lid for their manure.
Maybe a rehoming or something.
Some, some type of step up, maybe like, even, I would say, a warning in five days to address the issue, and then maybe take this step. But something that doesn't say, like, hey, we're taking your coop and your chickens, and you're done. I mean, that's kind of drastic.
And we wouldn't be able to do that anyway.
Similar to our other codes, that you have a notice of remedy.
Yeah.
Is that it?
That's everything.
Okay, so we're going to 100, and those two changes?
And bringing it back for December after the pilot program. For ordinance reading, okay?
I personally don't think we should go beyond 50 until we, but I'll go along right now with what we're saying.
And I only say 100, because I don't want us to have to come back and amend it.
We won't have to come back again.
It gets to 50.
If we have to come back again, it'll be because more than 100 people want chickens now.
I, I still like to keep it at 50. That's okay. I'll go along with what we're doing.
Okay. So you got the guidance you need, Marcus?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments from the council?
No, Mayor.
We're moving right along here. Stand fast, Barbara, don't you go anywhere.
Public participation?
We got public participation. Anyone wanting to? Ms. Chantel, I know you've got 17 hens in your backyard right now.
Well, we actually thought about it. The reason why there's a low participation in the pilot program is because it's way too invasive. First of all, you start with a permit, $50. It's expensive to raise chickens. You have all the food to, to get, you have the, the equipment, and, and then you have those people who come, and they don't even need to tell you when they come, and they come in your backyard, and they decide what you do. I mean, this is just not right. It's way in, too invasive. Now, I know some people who already have their chickens, it's working well, there's no complaint, why we don't see them from the street, they don't make any noise, they don't have any roosters, there's no smell, it's well taken care of, the animals are safe. I think, I really believe it is one of those cases of city overreach, and I can't put it another way. Yeah, and a permit, they should never have a permit for that, sorry, but I, I can't agree with it. I think that's, that's one of the cases where you need people to, to let them live their own life, and if they want, it's like they grow their own garden, you know? Are you going to come in a backyard and see if what they plant is okay, if they put the right fertilizer? No. I mean, it's, it's just, it's too much. It's, it's just, it's, it is not right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I'm assuming you're a chicken lady.
Hello, Ashley Durazio, B-section, Palm Coast. A couple of things I'd like to clarify that was falsely provided. The whole reason we started coming back in March or April was because Luis Mendez of Code Enforcement did come onto our property when we were not there. So that is outright just a lie. He even submitted the photos he took from our property to the Code Enforcement Board, where he made a whole slew of other lies and accusations, including one that we did not submit our permit until August 8th. The city of Palm Coast sends out confirmation emails. The daily permit program launched, I got home from work at 7:30, and by 9:01, you guys sent me a confirmation email saying it was filled out. According to Mr. Mendez, that's his basis of finding us. I think we're up to about $3,000 now. Because from July 1st, it took until September 25th for my pilot program to be approved. I was that house that was four times, because apparently bamboo is not a real wood. Who knew? It's growing right next to my palm tree, so my fence got denied. And then Mr. Buckley, wonderful man that he is, was painted to be the villain in this story, when he was specifically given my folder and told, "Review this." Why was he given that? When he, you guys made the pilot program, he specifically said this was not something that the building department would even oversee, because it's less than 120 square feet. As laid out by the pilot program, they have to be under 100 square feet. So back in June and July, we knew Mr. Buckley would not be involved. And yet, he was being, I was being told he was the reason I would not be able to get my permit, because my coop was three feet from my window. Luckily, he took the time, spoke to me, and realized that he had nothing to do with it, so it was able to be passed. I also find it, like I said, selective enforcement. Code enforcement came to my final permit, uh, uh, inspection. Code enforcement didn't show up to anybody else's, only animal control. Only animal control showed up to my first one. So why was code enforcement at my last one? Also, the average life of a chicken is 10 to 12 years. To say that possibly in two years, you're gonna have to, like, get rid of your pets is kind of cruel. But I'd just like to point out that there's a lot of inconsistencies and a lot of false narratives being spread, a lot of lies being spread, and, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
B-section, Palm Coast. I just wanted to point out some of the laws that we already have. We're talking about, you know, talking about ordinances and everything. We could try to keep ordinances lightweight. We already have laws on the books involving issues like noise, which hens are actually a lot quieter than dogs. Hens cluck at 63 decibels, while dogs are at 100. The law is Chapter 38, Article 2 prohibits excessive animal noise beyond property lines with a fine of up to $500. Apply Section 38, 36. There's sanitation that already exists, the issue being that poor coops can cause odors and pests. The law is Chapter 14, Section 1466, and Chapter 44, Section 44, 4. Require clean enclosures for animals with fines up to $250 a day. That application of that law would ensure that coop's cleanliness, and there's no permits needed. Nuisance, roaming chickens may disturb neighbors. The law, Chapter 14, Section 14, 4 prohibits animals running at large with fines up to $500. Cruelty, neglect raises welfare concerns. Law for the statutes, Section 828.12, and Chapter 14, Section 1467 require humane treatment with fines up to $5,000 a prosecution. There's already laws that exist to deal with most of these concerns that we're bringing out here for whatever reason, and we don't need a whole lot of extra to, for freedom that should already be there. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring, oh. Yes, sir.
Nathan Phelps, Palm Coast. Kind of was along for the ride as this all got written up with Code Enforcement, so I've tried to kind of collect the thoughts from a Facebook group about this, what people's thoughts are. One of the first things I heard was disappointment from renters, not being able to have them. And I understand the, the concern there, that they should be homesteaded homes that allow them. But some people retire to here, they don't want to own a home again, but they even have possibly their own experience raising chickens back, whatever state they were in before Florida. They just don't want to take up a mortgage. So having to take a mortgage just to have pets, that seems more something that should be handled between a landlord and a renter, and then allowing the landlord to maybe sponsor the renter, inciting their name to it, saying that they will take, you know, the responsibility, and then if they need to put it in the renter's agreement, that the renter is responsible to the landowner, landowner responsible to us. It seems like there should be an option for that. So I know people that thought they were gonna get chickens that can't have them in town. Obviously, you're gonna have the same people that say it's, it's too much governance, it's too much involvement, it's too much paperwork. And I, there is something to that. We always bring up property rights in this, and having to do a lot of what some would say, and I do agree, excessive paperwork just to have a pet that is a legal pet, but with a lot more hoops to jump through, that's keeping people from going through the registration process. I talked to a friend of mine who was waiting for these to be legalized. He has a family of four. They homeschool, they, they've got a lot of responsibilities, all the extra paperwork that you have to fill out. You have to draw a plan of your coop, plus the plan of where you're gonna put your coop on your property, and, as well as, I think, two or three other things you have to do. It becomes a lot of paperwork with the possible anxiety of being confused before you even start. So there, he told me, they'll probably just get them, and people will assume that they're legal. And that's their plan. Mine are legal, I have them, they're registered, they got papers, don't harass them. I'm not talking about myself. And I only have two kids, so it couldn't be me. And, and then other people, another example, this was an anonymous participant, obviously. She said, "I've had them for six years, and, but I have eight of them. I'm not going to have someone come through and find out, yeah, I've been violating rules this whole time." So I, from my own experience, I've got four chickens, I get maybe one or two eggs a day in a home of five people. We're not getting enough. So I think four is strict limitation, and then, two more seconds. The two-year limit is also, I have the same concern as previous speakers have said. That's my time, but those are the thoughts I've collected from other people.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment?
Mark Webb, Palm Coast. So I've been observing this for the past seven or eight months. It's been going on with these ordinances, the property rights, observing Barb and the challenges that we expect from her. But if I understand, the beginning of this whole conversation, the ordinance did not allow chickens in Palm Coast. And yet, there were. And we all knew there were. They were intentionally or not purposely not following the rule that was out there. How do we expect people to do it now? As this gentleman we just heard, there are people that have eight, and there should be four, and it's too difficult, the paper's too hard. And I would be curious to ask Barb, how many complaints of chickens have we gotten since the test has started? And what is your action when someone moves here, doesn't know or doesn't care about the ordinance, and for a year is successful at being next door to someone that doesn't have a problem with it? And then there's a hurricane, and the chicken coop gets blown into your neighbor's yard because it's not tied down or permitted or anything. How do we educate our new citizens on this ordinance? And how do we enforce the ordinance to cause people to want to participate and not end around it? So I don't know what the, the answers are to that, but remember, we started this whole conversation months and months and months ago, because people had chickens successfully, and it was against the rules of Palm Coast. And now you're trying to, once again, with every ordinance that we're trying to do, whether it's painting, or parking, or everything else we're trying to do, find some happy medium. I'm wondering about the new citizen that moves in in January, wants to put chickens in, or brings them with them. How do they know there is an ordinance? How do they know they're informed? So I think there's a lot of further conversation needs to occur and talk about, and kind of work on this, and that's why we have a workshop. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the dice. Barbara, that case that she had mentioned, could you elaborate on that, or?
I cannot, I, it did go to Code Board. I can't speak for Luis Mendez. I didn't work the case, so I'd have to talk to Luis and get back to you on it.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anything else from the council?
Do we want to discuss any of the, the issues mentioned at all?
Well, we can talk about the, the rental.
Yeah, I, I think maybe the mention of having the property owner sponsor is a, is a route that's potentially one that satisfies both sides.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that if, if someone is renting the property, and the owner says, "I am also willing to sign their application," then I, I don't have an issue with that. And from, from the, from the language of the ordinance, it didn't look like it limited the ordinance to owners. It looks like just the application limits the application to owners. So, yeah, I, I think it's, there's almost a conflict.
So in practice, we could, an owner could fill out the application, and then the renter could then maintain?
Well, the, at the, at the bottom line is the owner is the responsible party.
Right.
If it is a renter.
Yeah, so what I would recommend is that it's consistent. So in the ordinance, if we're gonna leave it as a property owner or a renter, then that, that person fills it out. I think it'd be better in the ordinance, say, hey, whoever wants to do it, they can do it, they have to fill out an application, and then if a landowner doesn't like it, and they're renting their house out, that's something that, a private thing that they work out between themselves.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, yeah.
The only other thing would be, maybe you could, the lease would have to be for two years or something, you know?
As far as the, to that point, as far as the permit renewal, is that just, I mean, what, what, what does that look like? What does a permit renewal look like?
It's the same process that we go through now. I mean, it would just be a matter, I mean, the coop's still gonna be there, I'm assuming, but it would just be, you know, an inspection, just to make sure.
Okay, so basically, an inspection to say, everything still looks good, we'll renew your permit. Okay.
All right, so you got the guidance you need on that part, Marcus? Anything else from the council? And I'm, I'm sorry, we, I have no knowledge of that case, so I have to get that information from Barbara.
Oh, I'm sorry, just one more thing. You know, to Mr. Webb's comments, you could, respectfully, your comments could translate to any rule or ordinance that we have.[1702.83] I mean, people oftentimes are not on notice about our laws. It's not, we shouldn't say, "Well, people are violating anyways, so we don't need to worry about an ordinance putting rules into place." For me, this initially came up from a group that said, "Hey, we would like to have chickens." And I'm thinking in my head, I don't see the issue as long as there are reasonable guardrails, which is what we're implementing. You know, so it wasn't really, for me, passing the ordinance wasn't so that we could get a bunch of people who are not in compliance into compliance. It was more, you know, I think that this should be something that's allowed on our infalots in our community, so.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
No, I just want to say to Mr. Phelps, you know, I appreciate the nuance and perspective because my, you know, my biggest hangup with this whole issue has been the low utilization. But you laid out one of the many reasons as to why, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anything else regarding this matter? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, ladies.
We're done with that one. We're moving on to the presentation of Traffic Calming Plan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Just as a reference point while staff is getting their presentation, this is in line with your Strategic Action Plan, Priority Design and Implement a Citywide Plan for Road Repair and Road Safety. So this is a continuous effort for road safety. This is your second or third presentation on the Traffic Calming Plan. And we're specifically talking about the traffic calming request application. If you recall from your previous presentation, we know the types of devices, but now it's the resident engagement and how you'd like to proceed. So our wonderful traffic team here, Division, Transportation Division of Engineering, is here to present. Go ahead, Venish.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and City Manager. My name is Venish Crawford, and I have Scott Keel, our traffic engineer, with us. Today, I'm with the Stormwater and Engineering Department. Tonight, we'll be presenting the traffic calming request application process. Tonight's presentation will cover five key areas. We'll go over the background, application process overview, household engagement criteria, impacted area selection, and council action and next steps. To go over the background, city staff and consultants conducted a citywide residential speed limit study to evaluate vehicle speeding. Based on the study, lowering the speed limit was not warranted on the residential collector roadways. However, it was warranted on the residential roadways, but council directed staff not to move forward with that. However, they directed staff to conduct a traffic calming pilot study, which was done last year. Now, we are here to present the traffic calming application process. But this process is to ensure a fair and transparent process. The staff has established a three-step application process for the residents.
I'm sorry. Can I may I stop you, please? So I know, so the second bullet point, lower speed, was warranted on local residential roads, but council directed staff not to move forward. I know prior council gave that direction, but I thought this council directed staff to further look at that cost as something that we would potentially move forward with. Am I mistaken?
I was under that impression.
Yeah, I thought that's what we directed staff to do.
Sorry, I was in the restroom. Can you repeat?
No, that's okay. So the second bullet point, we, I, my recollection is that prior council, so before this board, directed staff not to move forward on potentially looking at costs for changing the speed limits on the local residential roads. But this council said that it was interested in the cost, what that looked like to change from 30 to 25 on our local residential roads.
I thought we already had the costs from the last council when they were saying it was like a million dollars.
Yeah, it's 1.2, and it wasn't factored into the budget for this current year.
Okay, right. No, I get for this fiscal year, yes. But my recollection was that we wanted to further discuss the potential of looking at lowering the speed limits. And maybe that's just something that needs to be brought up during SAP, which I'm happy to readdress then.
It's in your SAP. It's, do you want, we don't have the money budgeted.
No, I know. I'm talking about for next year.
So we can include that, but then we wouldn't have the million dollars for micro-surfacing?
I'm not suggesting we change this year's budget.
No, no. For next year, if we were to have any extra money, you would need to prioritize whether we're doing the micro-surfacing or we're lowering the speed limit.
Or we use it, we pull it from something else. Yes, I agree. Obviously, we'd have to find, yeah, it's got to come from somewhere.
Is there no cost in any of the other traffic calming proposals?
Those costs aren't budgeted either.
Right.
So even if...
There's no money budgeted for traffic calming devices or speed limit reduction.
Correct.
Which is a problem.
In this current budget.
Yeah. So I think, I guess my point would be, as we look to SAP, then perhaps we really focus on budgeting whatever it is we're going to need to budget. For me personally, I'm tired of reading about car accidents. I'm tired of reading about injuries. I'm tired of reading about people, quite candidly, being killed on the roads. I'm tired. So I want to make it very clear that I will be focusing on making our cities or our streets safer in this coming SAP priority year. And I'm sorry, Carl, I know you were going to walk to the microphone, so.
So let me, let me see if I can help. Because in your SAP, we do owe City Council a comprehensive study to identify potential revenue sources to support the plan, evaluate funding options, implementing, including implementation of a gas tax, an additional dedicated line item of the millage for roads and public safety, and then present the finalized plan and funding recommendations to the City Council for review and approval. And we could do that in conjunction with the TransMap is going to be updating the road conditions, and that's scheduled for late spring, possibly, Carl?
Right now, we are working on a potential piggyback contract. If we cannot utilize that, then we'll be going up to an RFQ. But our intent is this fall to get them on a contract. They would scan it, January, February, March, and then we would have, you know, be able to put together our updated assessment on our roadways.
So that's what we owe to you that's in your current SAP?
So then I would just say, if that's owed to us, that we, I don't know if we need to maybe update the costs. I don't know if the cost of signs has increased or decreased in the last year and a half, year maybe. But I would just ask that we be given that updated cost to lower the speed limit signs.
Was that?
Yeah, that wasn't a bid cost. That was a cost, I think, from the DOT unit price average. So we can look at that cost, but I remember the discussion, just due to the quantity, it would take, like, Public Works three years and dedicated staff to do it, which means they can't do anything else. We could go out on bonfire for, like, maybe a certain quantity, get a hard bid for our area, and see what would it cost for a contractor to come in and do that work.
That would make more sense to me, rather than using...
Then we have a real cost out there.
Yeah.
So we'll compile that information and bring that to you sometime late spring.
And so with that study that's going to identify potential ways to fund traffic calming and everything in general in terms of roads, that would also include potentially these signs, the cost of those signs?
Yes, yes.
I think there's a core question. If we designate 25 miles an hour as citywide speed limit on residential streets, do we even have to have signs? If it's, if you're coming in our city and there's a sign that says residential speed limit is 25 miles an hour, do you have to have signs on every street?
We, residential collectors do not qualify for reduction in speed because the speeds were too high on the collector roads. So we only could reduce them on the local residential roads. So that's why we do need to sign the speed on both of them. I know most of our complaints are the collector roads, but we can't lower the speed on the collectors. It's the roads that people are already driving slow on where we'd reduce the speed limit.
They're not, though. They're not driving slow on them.
Not at all.
Right. I'm just saying, per this study, the average speed was like 26 miles an hour or so.
26 or 27.
But is it the state statute that you have to have speed limit signs on, in residential areas if you've already designated the city's speed limit in residential zones as being 25 miles an hour? That's what I want to know.
We would have to look at it. I believe we would need to have them off each residential collector intersection, but we will follow up on that.
Because they're changing speeds.
That would reduce the cost, though, right? If you were, say, if you were turning off of Royal Palm onto a side road, and there's one sign there as you're coming into that neighborhood saying, "Speed limit's 25 miles an hour."
Yeah, we will check. There's a couple of things involved, but we will look into it to confirm.
Go ahead, Carl.
I think it's a statutory thing.
I was going to say, just one thing to think about that. If you go that route where you just have a sign when you're in the city, you do run into a notice issue when you're trying to enforce type of a ticket or something like, or an accident. That's a conversation I've had with the sheriff's office on that.
Well, I'm just trying to reduce the number of signs that we need throughout the city. You don't need 17 signs on, you know, Cimarron going down.
Understood.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Gambero. Go right ahead.
Yeah, actually, you asked my question spot on. I mean, on military installations, right, it's 25 miles an hour unless otherwise posted, right? And it works. It works. So, you know, I think it's a lot cheaper to pull up signs and put a few at the entrances of neighborhoods and things of that nature than to redo them all.
Yep.
So I'm with you on this one, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And we'd have, we'd have a bunch of extra 30 mile an hour signs. I'm sorry, are we good? Continue on. You got what you need, City Manager? Okay, gentlemen, let's go on.
The next slide covers the traffic calming application process. The process has three steps in it. Step one is the application submission. So the resident submits an application. Step two, where staff conducts a traffic study and compares the eligibility criteria adopted by the council. Step three is the household engagement process. This is a resident-involved process. Staff is seeking council to adopt a few processes, which will be covered in the forthcoming slides. Step one, application submission, on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see a application where the applicant will have to fill their name in, phone number, email address, and the address where they are requesting this device on. The application could be submitted online or through a customer service in person. Once the application is submitted, it will be logged and reviewed by the staff to ensure that it meets all the requirement. From there, traffic staff will evaluate the eligibility based on the criteria that's established. Step two is where the, once the application is received, traffic staff conducts a study. They will look at the roadway eligibility requirements, such as if it's residential collector road and if the posted speed limit is 30 miles per hour. After that, the traffic staff will evaluate the speed and volume. They will look at the criteria, which is in two parts. First part is the 85th percentile speed limit. If it's more than three miles per hour above the posted limit and the average daily traffic is more than 2,000 vehicles a day. And there's a OR alternate criteria where the, at least 10% of the vehicles traveling more than eight miles per hour above the posted speed limit. This step ensures objective data is used to determine if traffic calming is warranted. Step three is the household engagement process. Based on our previous report and the presentation, 70% of the homeowner approval is required. The 70% of the homeowner that is required does not include the renters in it. You have to be a homeowner. And then the council adoption of engagement method, which will be shown in the next few slides. Based on our conversation with nearby agencies, local governments, and counties, we concluded with three options or three methods. First is a signed petition. Then we have electronic voting. And third option is a mail-in ballots. Based on these three options, we have prepared an impacted area map for the City Council to give us direction on. That will show the boundary of the impacted houses. So the first engagement process is petition itself, which is pretty straightforward. Applicant will collect a signed petition from all the approved impacted zone map, which will be shown in, within a few slides. There are a couple of advantages and disadvantages. Advantages are there are more opportunity to obtain 70% of the signatures. Disadvantages are the liability, if the homeowner doesn't want people to be on their property to solicit. And then there's a, there's hard time for us to track both options, either if they are for or against the petition. Second option is a web-based engagement. So in that case, IT would develop a custom in-house voting software. They will, they will send individual unique link to the homeowner, depending on their email addresses that will be pulled from the utility bling software. And then those specific link will be sent out to the homeowner, and then there they can vote yes and no for the traffic calming devices. There are advantages and disadvantages as well. Advantages are it's quick and convenient. Resident can vote from their phone or computer. It saves mailing cost, telling is automatic, and it's in real time. The disadvantages are addresses may be outdated as far as the email addresses goes with limiting reach. Some resident may not be comfortable with online voting. Significant staff time is needed to develop the in-house web-based system. Third engagement process is mail-in ballots. City staff will create the ballot and provide a location map of the traffic calming devices to be installed, and those ballots will be mailed out with a return postage. There are disadvantages and advantages as well. Advantages are it's easy resident access to the engagement, easy to track both options, either if they are for or against the traffic calming device. Disadvantages are additional cost for the postage, additional time for organizing ballot data, and if the homeowner is out of state, they may not receive the ballot. So we reached out to few agencies. On the left-side column, you can see the agency names, which are Orange County, St. Cloud, Volusia County, and Ormond Beach. We reached out to them, and we did ask them how they collect their data, which is shown in the second column, and how they evaluate their data is on the third column. And in our, in our research, it shows that most of these, or all of them, require some sort of residential involvement. And status for Orange County, they have established system since 1996. St. Cloud has a policy that they adopted in 2017. Volusia County is still developing their process, and Ormond Beach has currently suspended their traffic calming. This is the map that we wanted to show to the council and get their adoption or approval on it. So the option one is shown in, in blue, where the household located directly on the impacted route. So what you see on the screen is you have white view on the bottom side, which is south side. You have Pine Lakes, and the road we're showing is Woodbury. You have a couple of areas highlighted in blue, magenta, and green. Option one is the blue option, which are the household directly on the impacted road. Option two is option one, which is Woodbury, and the household access available only from the affected area, which is shown in the magenta color, which would be Woodborne Lane. And then option three is option two, which is Area One, Area Two, Area A, Area B, and Area C. Area C is the area which they do have a secondary access. And then tonight, we're looking for some council actions. First is to approve the traffic calming application process. Second option is to adopt the impacted area option, either option one, two, or three. And third is to adopt the household engagement option, which is, option one is petition, option two is web-based engagement, and option three is mail-in ballot. This program is set to launch in January 2026. Staff will conduct studies and reviews, and eligible road will be included in the fiscal year 27 budget proposal.
Thank you, sir. I was just thinking, why couldn't we allow a resident, say, John Smith, he lives on, what's the name of that road? It's on the north end, I can't remember. Lives on Lee Drive. Say he lives on Lee Drive. And he says, "Okay, we need traffic calming devices in our area." Why couldn't he come to the city and say, "I would like to start a petition for this," and the city facilitate online petition? That way, he can send it out or give it to his neighbors instead of voting or individual applicants. He could share, bless him, he could share that link and say, "Hey, go and tell them that you want to do it." Is that possible to do it that way?
Orange County does that right now. Any road that comes into them, they check. For us, there's really only 69, 70 roads that would fall into the criteria of being researched. If you've got a short road and they want the common methods, it doesn't warrant it based upon track.
Yes.
So we already started a list, and if a person puts in one of those roads, we're going to go out in-house, and we're going to find out if it meets the traffic. We're going to do a counter with it, and then we're going to look at the speed. Because if it doesn't fall within those two criterias where you have the percentage for speeding, which is really the eight miles, that automatically triggers it, or the other two items, which is traffic and also a certain lower speed, then at that point in time, that road would not qualify for it, and then we would not look at it again for another three years.
Okay. And the road I was thinking about was Laramie. They have a big problem up on Laramie.
Yeah.
So, all right. So what do you need from us right now? Go over it again.
Today, we're seeking approval on the impacted area option, if you can see the map. If council wants to direct city staff to go with option one, two, or either three.
Okay. And explain A again?
Option one would be if you are looking at Woodbury. Option one is... Option one would be if you are looking at Woodbury, option one is all the household located directly on Woodbury.
Okay, got it.
Option two is household located on Woodbury plus the access, not the access road, but the access for the household who lives on Woodborne because they only have two accesses.
The only.
Both of them are on Woodbury.
Option two would be roads that have to get onto Woodbury in order to exit their neighborhood.
And then option three is both options plus the area which has secondary access.
Okay. What options do you guys want to go with?
I think I would favor two, you know, because you have other options with, with option three.
Yeah.
But option two, those people have to get on that road as well, right? So they're, they're forced to be impacted by this decision, so they should have a say in it.
My guess would be I would go with option two, but I'm against the whole system. I think we should just either have one speed limit for residential roads. And this is a very complicated process.
Councilman, if we could lower all of the residential roads to 25, I would be with you. I'd be totally satisfied with that solution.
I mean, that's, I think this is, is, I'll say option two, just say it, but I, I think, I don't think that's.
I agree. I just, I also don't know if that actually slows people down, right? Changing the sign, you know?
It does.
A1A, I don't, I don't speed on A1A. Most of that road now is 35 miles an hour. I don't go down there as much because it's that.
Well, I mean, so Santa Maria is right in, you know, in Flagler and I, I do go slow because of the speed limit being as slow as it is. So, yeah, I, I think it does. I think the other thing that we need to give direction on, if we're going to move forward with this, is methodology. And I would be for mail-in. And the only reason I say mail-in is because I, I think petition going door to door is going to be pretty burdensome. I don't like the online option only because I agree would be easier, but I also agree that it's, number one, staff has to create, I guess, like a, a program for that, but also I don't know the extent that that's susceptible to abuse. That's a concern for me. I, I would, I would favor mail-in. I also though, think that if you rent, you should be able to respond to this. If you're, because right now it says you have to own, right, to respond. I would say that if you, if you're a tenant, obviously not a STR tenant, but a permanent tenant, you should be able to respond.
Yeah, it, you know, devil's advocate, it's, you know, you make a decision that installs or helps, help make a decision that installs a speed bump and then you, you move to the other side of town and now people that live thereafter you are stuck with your decision. But you could say the same thing about homeowner, right? You helped make a decision and then you sold your home and moved. So I'm not really swayed either way on that necessarily.
So on the mail-in, are you saying a person would have to collect the petitions or just each individual person would have to mail the city?
We would mail them out, right?
Mail them out?
And then, yeah, so it's going to be a question of the city. The good thing with that is Orange County was the one who's doing it the longest. And I spoke with the gentleman, he said, by far, if I learned one thing, it's through the mail-in. Eliminates somebody falling on somebody else's property for liabilities. And a beautiful thing with that is we can include a map wherever looking to put the common devices. And more importantly, we can get a yes and an OR and a no. So now when you're looking to get the 70%, which was the number we're trying to achieve, you don't get somebody that's going to sign and only go up to the people and say, yeah. You know, so now you're going to actually know because what we found is there's people just as vocal who don't want them as the people that.
Sure.
And so when we're talking about 70%, we're talking about 70% of the homes, right? Not 70% of the responses.
70% of the homes.
Yes. Okay, good.
Okay. Did you have anything, Councilman Gavira? I don't want to exclude you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I, I'm, I'm with the Vice Mayor and, and Councilman Sullivan. You know, on, on all of our residential streets, it's just way too fast and whether we replace the signs at 25 miles an hour or, you know, post the sign at the entrance of a neighborhood, you know, I, you know, 25 miles unless otherwise, you know, posted, you know, I think that's, we, we need to do something. And so for sure, but I'm happy to go along with option two. But, yeah, I think.
You're good with option two for the impacted areas? You got that one? And you're okay with the mail?
Yeah.
Mail three, option three mail ballots?
Yeah, that seems like the, yes, sir, that seems like the most effective way to engage.
All right. Thank you, sir. That's the guidance you need? You're good on that?
Yes, sir.
And I would like to know what, if we can get that information about state statute, what the requirements are for posting, you know, speed limit in residential areas.
And we're going to have to work to find that money somewhere. In terms of the mail-in, I assume that significantly increases the response rate versus other methodologies.
According to Orange County.
Okay.
Because it eliminates the ADA because some, somebody doesn't know how to do a computer.
Yeah, exactly. I think if you were going to do electronic, you would also have to have a secondary system similar to this for those, you know, for people who can't, won't, whatever, use electronic devices.
Okay. So you have the guidance you need from us?
Yes.
All right. Stan Fass, any other comments from the council?
No, thank you.
We'll open it up for public comment. Yes, ma'am.
Chantel Preninga. All right, okay. If you know something needs to be done, do it. There's no need for a study. People are not necessarily going to send that, to put their envelope in the mailbox. They're not going to check on their computer and, and vote. Although who will most likely like to speed up anyway. So here's my problem. In Zebra Trail, when I drive in that street, if there's another car coming the other way, we both have to slow down and make sure with the mirrors, we don't hit the mailboxes. I mean, this is that bad. And you have little kids who go to the school bus and you have people who walk their, their dog or their children or the stroller and, and you have a speed limit of 30, 30 miles an hour, which means people go 35, you know? It's a safety issue. It doesn't mean more studies. Now, what I would like to see is everywhere in the neighborhoods where we right now have 30, pass it to 20. Why 20 and not 25? Because people are going to drive 25 if you do 20. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Webb.
Mark Webb, Palm Coast. This is why I'm here tonight. Vice Mayor knows that I've been working for four years to acknowledge that 30 miles an hour is not a safe speed in our residential streets. I don't know, did you guys all forget Sheriff Staley standing right here saying 25 does not get you 25? He said that the ordinance in this state is that his enforcement officers do not enforce speeds unless they exceed 35 miles an hour. We've already done this study. We went and did Woodbury, painted speed track, white tracks up and down the road. It raised the speed on Woodbury. I've been listening to this for months and months and we've expended a great amount of money to try to control the speeds. We have a sign machine over at Public Works. If we lower it from 30 to 20, we only have to change one number, the 30 to two. We can make it in the office and have somebody go along and put a two on every sign that's there for pennies. We have to go to 20 in the back streets. I know that Vice Mayor's with her son walking around. I walk my dogs this time of night. I'm in yellow and a light and people are still flying by me. I ask you to ponder this question. Look at the extent that we'd put around our schools to slow people to 20 miles an hour for students, for kids, flashing lights, crossing guards, a plethora of sheriffs all over to slow them to 20. Well, these kids on their e-bikes, on their bikes are driving from a half a mile to two miles to get to the school on 30 mile an hour roads with no sidewalk. This is not rocket science. We don't need a study. We don't need to spend anything else. We need to lower our speed limit to 20 miles an hour and then we need to do one more thing. We need demand enforcement from our sheriff's department, which we pay more and more every year to have them there because that is what will get people's attention. Not speed bumps, not all this other plethora of stuff on the road. So yes, I'm very passionate because I don't want to get hit in front of my house. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Carr.
Steve Carr. I sort of have a problem with the 70% because the speed studies was what determined whether or not they recommended traffic common. 70% is not going to reduce that risk. The risk still of that speed study is still there. So if you've got 70% of the people saying, no, we don't want it, the risk's still there. So I, me, I just don't understand that one. But also a lot, a lot of things go into it also. Florida Park Drive, according to FDOT, had before the, the traffic common was there, had 8,500 cars per day. And the traffic study said that 65% of the people were driving 37 miles per hour or below, which meant there was 35% of the people that were speeding above that. Well, you do the math, 35% of 8,500 is about 2,000 cars a day speeding through a neighborhood. So I, there are other, you know, the other things that need to be taken and taken into That's all I just got to say. I mean, there's some things that really need to be really looked at. But if you've got a traffic study that says that they're recommended for traffic common and then you say, well, I'm going to take the 70% and not give it to them, does that make sense? Because it doesn't reduce the risk to the children? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment?
Mr. Mayor, you almost made me dive into the bunker.
Artillery come here. All right, no further public comment. We'll bring it back to the desk. Any follow-ups? You gentlemen have the guidance you need from us?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I do want those, that state statute on how we'd have to do it if we want to lower.
So let me ask this question, Mr. Mayor, that's okay?
Yes.
Okay. So Mr. Crawford, can you remind me, when you did the speed study, did it warrant that the speed limit should be lowered to 20 or 25 miles per hour?
We have two type of roadways, residential collector and just residential road.
Yes.
So Point Pleasant is a residential collector. We have signage on residential collector, which governs the, the entire neighborhood for that speed limit. Or based on the study, speed limits on the collector roadways cannot be reduced. It can only be reduced on only the residential road. That's where the higher amount comes in because if we were to reduce the speed limit on just the residential roadway, we'll have to install new signage on every single one.
On every turn.
On every single entrances. Each roadway has two entrance and the cost was, I think, if it's done in-house, it's roughly $1.6 million. If we have to get a contractor on board, then you have MOT cost, mobilization, which will raise it extremely high.
So can I just follow up on that? So like, I, I asked him that because the state statute 316.189 says that you can only lower the speed when you've done a study and the studies say it's reasonable to do that. If it does not, does not do that, you cannot lower the study.
That was the point of the study. I mean, that was one of the points. I remember that very well. And so on the residential, I don't think we would need any other studies. You know, I think this would be.
We already have the data to support that.
Right. So again, I mean, you know, I, I'm with Councilman Sullivan on this. I, I think that we kill two birds with one stone. If we lower the speed limits on the residential roads, we don't need traffic calming, you don't need speed bumps if you're, if you've got a speed limit of 20 or 25, well, 20 certainly. Maybe you could use them at 25.
Would any TPO Vision Zero grants or anything like that be applicable to?
No, I believe we've looked into this before because these are not, these are local roads. There's not state roads. There's not a lot of funding.
I know they have, they have specific, so they'll, they have grants armed at, aimed at, at, you know, reducing fatalities and pedestrian.
Which we did receive grant funding from TPO for Whiteview, the current project that we have, but that took some law, some time. We, that was on the TPO list for one of the most dangerous thoroughfares for years and now we are just moving forward with the construction.
I know they have also grants that are kind of like one-off projects for signaling and things like that. And I don't know if we could shoehorn speed limit signage into that program.
I mean, I would be willing to sacrifice a year of microservicing to lower these speed limits. This, that's how passionate I am about this. So, you know, I, I, I like our microservicing program. I would hope that council would carry that forward, but I think to pause it for a year in order to lower the speed limits, I, I think that that's warranted.
I, I understand your, you know, the, the, obviously this is an important thing. My opinion is we need to find more funding for microservicing, so going the opposite way.
I don't disagree with you.
Kind of, it kind of hurts me a little bit.
Well, safety and security are always number one.
Yeah, no, and I got you. I, I definitely agree that if we can reduce accidents, reduce the speed, you know, talk about there's, you know, the slower vehicles going, the less likely it's going to cause a serious injury when there is an accident. So, so I understand. Are we, are we making this decision about this right now? Or are we giving guidance on whether we want to go forward with this?
Just for tonight, we just need to know your options and we can come back to you in a future meeting regarding speed limit signs and all of that.
So we got option two and option three?
Yes, they got, they got their guidance. And we can, once we get that, and it's, the, I'm, my question, Marcus, is the question about signage, not about our right to do it. If we got the study that says, hey, yeah, it's warranted, that's good enough for me. I, you know, like when, I think when you guys went through, Councilman Ponteir, when you guys went through and you, that 135,000 and like 9,000 was specifically for Florida Park Drive and it says, in the statute, I went and read it, and it says an investigation. It doesn't say a study. So back then, I was thinking to myself, that was a waste of money because we could do that in-house, an investigation.
It's very big, yeah.
Yeah, an investigation is not a study, not a costly study, not a hundred thousand dollar study. So my question was about, you know, the signage, where to, the, the signage is required on residential streets. It's not about if we have the right to do it.
So can you elaborate a little more? What do you mean? Like, what are the requirements to get there or how do we?
The, the signs say if you're coming into the city of Palm Coast on a side street, say coming across Hammock Dunes Bridge, and you're coming into the city and there's a sign that says, "Speed limits in all residential areas are 25 miles an hour unless otherwise posted." And you have that coming in at every main entrance into the city and even on some of the side streets. I'm trying to eliminate the cost of all those signs being replaced.
You, in theory, yes, you could do that, but you are running into a notice issue because what if someone that lives in a street that does not see that and they get pulled over speeding under 25 miles? There's no way we would be able to win that battle in court.
Say, hey bud, how long you been living in this city? It went into effect last January. January 1, it went into effect. The mayor said it.
So when you do notice, like, so as you guys talked about military, I was a former prosecutor that investigated traffic and did, and that's what we did. And I, every time I had to do a traffic citation, I had to have a picture of the sign when they get on that military base. We can't do that in a city because the military base, you got two, three entrances. You control them. So like, what my concern is like, I can see your argument when visitors coming through, the main thing. But my concern is like, you have a city resident that is not, is like, I don't know, somewhere off of Colbert and there's no sign around there that says, hey, it's 25 and we get pulled over. There's no notice.
You could say, I've never left the city, so I never saw that sign, right?
Yeah, it's like a stop, a stop sign. When you're, when you're told to stop at a, a light and you blow a stop sign, the judge's going to say, hey, show proof that you had noticed you had to stop there. That stop sign is around the end of the street. That's how we prove it.
So the statute says that when there's a change in speed zone, so maybe we can reduce the signage to the extent it goes from 30 to 25. And let's say we've got five signs currently from the time the speed changes to, I don't know, the end of the neighborhood or whatever, maybe we can reduce the amount of the signs, you know? I don't, I don't know.
But I think what they are saying is that currently because we're only posting on residential collectors, there are not a lot of signs in the neighborhoods. residential collectors, there are not a lot of signs in the neighborhoods. And now, because there's going to be a change from residential collectors to your interior roads, you have to post a sign at every turn, essentially.
Every time there's a turnoff from the.
Well, no, when there's, so you gave Point Pleasant as an example. So if Point Pleasant turns off into one residential collector, you post a 25 speed limit sign. It doesn't, I don't think it necessarily means that, like, all your fingerling signs then have to have speed limit signs because it already changed.
When you came into the neighborhood, you knew, say, like, if you're going in Lee, up in the L section, that's the only road going into Lee.
No, not every second or third turn, but every turn off the collector would need a sign.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, that was my understanding the whole time, is that we're not putting signs at the next road and the next road.
And that's.
Because they don't even have signs right now because you're just following what the residential collector is doing. Because it was posted there.
No, they do. They have them.
Do we have them?
Yeah.
Only residential collector have 30 miles per hour.
Really?
Yes.
Wow.
So we're already fairly limited where we have signs because of that reason, because they're all the same speed.
Now, some of the residential road.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
No, listen, I'm with Councilman Sullivan and the vice mayor on this. We've got to do something sooner than later. And I like the idea of holding the, you know, a year's worth of microservicing projects to pay for it. We have to do something sooner than later. We cannot not take an action that won't, you know, continue with the accidents and the issues we have currently going on. You're right, Councilman Sullivan, public safety is number one.
Can we maybe get consensus today for a city manager to go out for RFP to see if, you know, so that we don't suck up all the staff time replacing these signs, so at least see what that looks like? Can we get consensus?
I have no problem with that. You get Councilman Sullivan?
I think we had already mentioned that, that we need to know what the cost of signs is, right? Yeah.
It would most likely be a construction, but not RFP because of the cost.
Okay.
And a lot of the signs didn't get posted down because they were driving less than 30 miles an hour on those side.
So we're not replacing, we're adding?
Right. So now, but we've got to look into the standards for FDOT because a lot of times when you have changes in speed limits, you usually have a sign that says, "Speed limit change ahead." So it's more than just getting involved with, you're going to make a turn and change. So we have to find out what's required for these signs. And the reason why they weren't done previously is because posted speed was 30, and they were going 26. So if we go to 25, the reality of it is, they're still going to go 26. So we're going to be.
I'm probably going to 22.
Well, I'm just saying, so we're already going on those side streets, you know, very slow.
So you've got to get out and push your car.
If you're, if you're running on.
In the neighborhoods.
If you're running on, like, Lee Drive going into my neighborhood and running 30 miles an hour, you're booking.
You're booking, yeah.
You're booked.
Yeah, I mean, anecdotally, it seems even those speeds, like, I've had people telling me to slow down. I looked down, I'm like, I'm going under the speed limit right now, you know?
Reception. You gentlemen have the guidance you need.
Yes.
City manager, you have the guidance you need. Okay.
Thank you.
We're closing it out. Thank you, Jake. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I think those requirements for reduced speed ahead are on the same.
All right. We're moving on to item four to discuss the city manager. Ms. Fuller's like, "Okay, here we go."
You got it. This is the easy one.
And now, Councilman Sullivan, what was your, what were you going to say?
Before we, before we start, we don't really have anything listed. I would think that something like, something like this, that if each of us had a, could submit a maximum of three names or less, then the clerk could maybe do a tabulation of, you know, just kind of, you put the candidate name on one side, and you just put the votes on another one, and you begin to cut it down. Okay.
Well, I don't know. I know, I'm with you. I didn't know.
Did you have your meeting with staff? Oh, that's right, we didn't have them this week because of the holiday.
It's allowed to check that.
Okay.
So, but, okay, my second point is, should we submit the three names silently so that the first person who speaks could affect the other person's ideas?
No, I want to know who you're voting for. I'm just messing around.
You guys are going to hear from me.
Ms. Fuller, you've gotten everything that you needed from the candidates, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so going forward from here, you have the ballots?
Yes, sir. I wasn't, I wanted to be prepared, so I created those ballots with your name on them if you want to go that route.
Okay, my suggestion is, we each mark the three names. I don't want to interview more than three people, me personally.
You think three is the magic number?
Three, three will be the magic number. You pick one, your number one, your number two, your number three choice. Those candidates getting at least three votes, there may be more than, there may be more than nine.
So are we just marking next to it, or are we saying one, two, three?
I'd say one, two, three.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Did we want to talk about derogatory information found on some of the candidates?
We had our chance.
That Ms. Fuller was able to bring up before we go down this road?
You have anything derogatory to sit out?
Yeah, I do. So Mr. Gefkin, for example, and this is part of the information that Renina and her team provided, was fired from his position for being a defiant city administrator and subject to multiple lawsuits. Mr. Thomas Thomas was fired from his city manager position for treating his employees unfairly. Those are the two main ones that jumped out out of the research that our staff provided. Are you guys tracking that?
We were all given access to that information. There's nothing new there.
Yeah, we were.
There was one in his video, he explained his termination. Was that McLaughlin, maybe? I can't.
Yes, I believe so, from South Florida.
Yeah, so that's, that wasn't one of the two that I mentioned. I mean, Gefkin, Thomas, Thomas, and then McLaughlin did explain. So, I don't know. I just wanted to throw it out there as part of, you know, the calculus and making sure everybody's tracking that before we vote.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And to your point, Councilman Sullivan, yeah, we were all given that information. I think when I was looking at, and I actually, I didn't realize we were going to go this route, but I narrowed it to three. I won't share who they were, but I looked at, you know, I didn't want to look at anything in a vacuum. I looked at who, you know, who got three or four votes to begin with from all of us. In other words, you know, what are the chances that we'll actually all hopefully come to a consensus on the number one pick? You know, who had the resume, you know, that will translate well for the city? For me personally, it was the government experience, the government budget experience. And then, you know, I really looked at the white papers and the videos to say who seems to be in touch with the city's needs and produced good answers, was a good communicator in their video, and then had a white paper that was just really on point and very in tune with what we seem to need in the city. So I can appreciate you pointing those things out, Councilman Gambaro, because I did take those things into consideration, into strong consideration as well. And then, you know, just looking at everything. I think that this process, Renina, you all did a very good job. I'm very happy with the work that staff did on this, and I want to thank you for that. Thank you.
All right, one more thing before we cast our votes. Does anyone on the council know any of these people personally?
No.
Negative.
Go down that road, just want to make sure, so Allison has the direction. Are you just writing down the, like, three names?
One, two, and three.
Two and three.
So you're ranking them one, two, and three?
How are we going to do that with Mr. Gambaro?
Right.
You just announced.
What are we doing?
His is not anonymous.
Can he email it? Can he just email it? Are you, do you have access to email, Councilman Gambaro?
I would prefer that he would just do it over the, that's how we've done it.
He can do it.
We've already done ours, so it doesn't.
Yeah, I guess that's true.
It's not going to affect my decision.
It's all public record, right?
As far as our turn then before his.
Right.
Yeah, and it does public record as soon as we write on it.
So we've submitted ours, Councilman Gambaro. Tell us your, one, two.
One second, so Allison's paying attention. Yeah, Mr. Gambaro can go ahead.
One, two, and three for you, Mr. Gambaro.
Number one, Mr. West. Number two, Mr. Frazier. Number three, Mr. Shembry.
Okay. Total them up there. Scratch it. You ever play dominoes? You played dominoes in the Navy?
Oh, yeah, they do. I was never much.
Because if you didn't get an event, you got the lowest total because you have a zero. But what I'm saying is, first place is one point. If you were the opposite, first place is three points.
We should have went with weighted scores there, Councilman Miller.
Yes, right? Yeah.
You hear me?
What's that?
I said, "We should have went with weighted scores." Mine and yours should have counted twice because these guys aren't going to be here. We got to work with the person.
The weighted scores for time left in office.
Well, I don't know. I could still.
But they're still, they're still going to be my city manager.
I'm going to ask.
That's true. Mr. Mayor, so this is why I wanted clarification. So the point of this exercise for you guys to narrow it down to top three, right? So am I to assume that number one, whoever you put down number one gets three points, number two gets two? That's, so how else do we know?
Number one is my first pick, number two is my second pick, number three is.
What if you all picked?
Well, you could have done like that. That's what I was trying to say.
If they have, if they have three or more, if they're on, if they're on their three, three people on the city council has selected that person, they move forward.
We could potentially have five of them, though.
I think the one vote should be, all one votes, and the two votes should be.
I agree that, kind of what you were talking about, that one gets three points, and whoever has the highest amount of points is our number one candidate, number two, number three, and then we go with three people total. Because otherwise, we could have four or five people that received three votes.
You're going to go through multiple rounds.
It would be the lower score then because your number one person is one vote.
Yeah, golf scores.
It wouldn't work that way because zeros, unless you're assigning a four to a non-vote.
You can't have a zero in golf.
That's what I'm saying, though, when you add and do an average.
Mr. Sullivan, go ahead. You've been trying.
Give me my sheet back.
No, Mr. Sullivan. This one.
The way to do it is, if you, if any of us voted for somebody number one, the guy's name is here.
Yeah.
And then he would get, for all the one votes, he gets a mark.
Sure.
If he gets a two vote, so in the end, what you have is a display where someone will have more one votes than anybody else, and somebody will have more two votes, you know, the second guy.
Just let him use your mark.
So you have to separate. The votes are not all equal. Each priority vote, each one is a higher priority.
We prioritize them. Number one is the highest priority, so the lower total number score you get, the more chances are you're going to move forward in the process.
So the ones that all be in this column, the twos that all.
Yeah.
So the ones get, you're saying ones get one point?
They all get one point, but it depends on whether they.
I disagree with that methodology because you could have somebody that comes in second for number one and receives no number two votes and doesn't win either of those positions.
I think, I think we use Councilman Sullivan's chart there and tally them up that way. That should be easy enough.
So again, I don't, I don't know if it would happen, but.
Or we can just, or we can just talk through it.
Well.
So what happens if you come in second and first and you have no number two votes?
Whoever gets the most number one votes is number one, and then whoever gets the most number twos is number.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. So say if you have a second place where everybody liked them as a number one, but there was a majority, right, of another person? Nobody voted them as a number two, but they were clearly the second most favorite.
I think this will work fine.
Okay, well, the methodology is incorrect, but.
We'll see how it comes out, and then we can talk about it.
How many names were there? Seven?
Probably you're not going to just go with one person anyway. We're probably going to pick two or three.
It's going to be three.
We started with seven, right?
We started with like 120.
Between last time and this time, we're going from seven.
We had 12, sir.
Is it 112?
We had 12, and then we went to seven.
Okay, 12, seven, now we're hoping to get it down to three.
I only have six, right? Correct, right.
Six, that's right, because one person.
Ms. Henry, where are you going?
He's like.
I'm tired of y'all.
I'm tired of me, too.
I was hoping to get out of here before nine, but.
I anticipated nine. I don't have any council plans, if that helps.
What?
I don't have any council plans, if that helps.
Really?
No, not a single one.
Well, Allison Talas is up. I don't know if you guys want to do your sports things that you always talk about every weekend? You can make that banter right now?
No.
Baker Mayfield, MVP.
He's pretty awesome, ain't he?
Killing it. Oh, my gosh.
He's Oklahoma, right?
312 conversion? Yes, Oklahoma. Well, he was a walk-on at Texas Tech, crushed it there, transferred to Oklahoma, then planted a flag at Ohio State.
Football games ever played was when Mahomes and Baker Mayfield had a big football game. It was an unbelievable game if you ever watched it.
Yeah, no, I think there was like, I think it was like 70 to like 63 or something like that. Basically, they said whoever has the ball last is going to win.
I think everybody in Tallahassee wants to fire Michael. They want to fire your coach.
Yeah, yeah, I'm waiting. I'm waiting for that to happen.
It is kind of unforgivable to lose three games when you're supposed to be a top-ranked team.
Well, they still got a lot of games.
Is Navy still in?
A lot of games to lose.
Navy's got a lot of leagues.
Listen, I'm going to the next week's game. I think it's the last game on our schedule that will be favored to win against Mississippi State.
Ole Miss is doing very well.
Yeah, we're trying to, trying to steal that coach.
My Yankees lost the playoffs. That was a part, they got spanked.
Yeah, Navy's six and up.
My dad was telling me that.
It's probably all the guys with the Marine Corps patches pulling the, pulling the weight around there. You watch those Navy games, and you're like, "Man, that player's really good. Who is that?" And then he pops up, and he's got a Marine Corps patch on his shoulder.
And no Marines have ever been a quarterback, right?
Really?
Figure it out.
Probably, probably fullbacks and linebackers.
Offensive linemen, too. They have to be pretty smart.
Beef on trails. Beef on trails.
Mostly defensive guys.
Just attack, attack, yeah.
Florida State's issue for me, they're, they're playing a three-four defense and their secondary is garbage. They won't cover.
But they looked really good against Alabama. I don't know why, but...
I know, I told you that was our biggest game of the year, but you let a freshman quarterback wear you out.
Yeah.
And then you make up all...
The problem is, is you guys just wrote that guy an extension, so I think you'd owe about sixty million dollars to get rid of him.
Well, they got boosters willing to pay it, just give... I, I like the guy, it's just...
I mean, that's the same way with Billy Napier. I like him, he just, I don't like him as our coach.
I think...
In the end, wins and losses matter.
Yep. Well, I, I told some guy sitting next to me, I wish they would just play in the first quarter like they play in the fourth quarter.
Did it work?
Well, I mean, we followed your instructions.
What does that mean?
Well, we don't even know which names are on list.
Low scores, right? Low, lower the score...
No, that's not the instructions you guys gave.
That's what he asked us to do. So, I would just read it as, as, Mr. Sullivan has the name, what, what ranks they got, and then each, how he had it. So, the candidate's name, and then go from there.
Norman West received two one votes, no two votes, and no three votes. Mr. Frazier got one one vote and four two votes and no three votes, obviously. Okay, Carl Gepkin, one one vote, one two vote, and one three vote.
You say one-one-one?
Yes. Uh, yes. Um, Michael McLaughlin, he received one one vote, no two votes, and two three votes.
Can you repeat that?
Of course. One one vote, no two votes, and two three votes.
So, who are the top three?
We still got, yeah, we still got them.
Uh, Mr. Thomas did not receive any votes, um, one, two, or three.
Well, that makes that one easy.
And Mr. Shembry received, he didn't receive any one votes, any two votes, but he did receive two three votes.
They're both out. That's scratch.
You have to figure out, we got four.
So, it looks like, if I'm reading this correctly, and Mr. Sullivan, you can, you can prove freedom because this is your own creation. Uh, it looks like Mr. Frazier, he kinda got the most votes. He got one one vote and four two votes, all right? And it looks like after that is, kinda, he got Mr., is it Carl?
He got three.
He got three. Uh, because he got one for number one, one for number two, and one for number three. Uh, and then after that, I would say it's, it's a toss-up. Yeah, Mr. West, he got two number ones, and then, uh, you got... Uh, McLaughlin got one one and two threes.
So, conversely, with the point-scoring methodology, Mr. Frazier would have nine points, Norman West would have six points, Gepkin would have six points, and McLaughlin would have five points.
So, I have a, the way, the way I look at this is only two people on this council voted for Norman at all.
Voted for who?
Norman, Norman West.
That makes sense if you're talking about, you know, trying to make sure that we have consensus on who the final person is.
Correct. Frazier had, uh, three people, no, actually, five. Five.
Yeah, all five.
All five of us voted for him, at least.
In some shape or form.
There he is, we're done.
Yeah. Um, I, I, to me, based on what Councilman Gambaro was saying about Gepkin, I, I actually did really like him. I was not a fan of his history on the, his, um, internet search history, so I say he's out. And then McLaugh, McLaughlin also had three of us vote for him in some shape or form. So, he had, Norman West only had two of us vote for him, Frazier had five, and then McLaughlin had three.
Gepkin had three also.
Right, but Gepkin, I, I just don't, I'm not comfortable with him based on the internet...
But he had three points.
Yeah, 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 he had three people vote for him.
We have to then talk about it now that we have some idea.
Yeah, so, I mean, to me, you narrow it down to Frazier and McLaughlin.
You're saying two?
Yeah, and you get rid of Norman based on the fact that only two people voted for him. Shembry only had two people, and they were number threes. Thomas had nobody, and then Gepkin based on his internet history.
My, my, my only concern, and I agree, I read everything, too, and I, at first, I thought Gepkin might be the best guy.
I did, too.
Because he, he answered the questions well, and then you read the stuff about him. Now, the thing is, he, he seems to me that he's very knowledgeable and be, is qualified for the job, but I, I have to admit, in the end, I, I chose Frazier over him just because of that.
Yeah.
I was about, there's, that's where I...
Okay, so are, are we, are we, do we have a consensus to move forward interviewing Mr. Frazier and Mr. McLaughlin?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm gonna jump in just again to say that I think Mr. West is an excellent candidate. He had an excellent white paper. I liked his infrastructure first and planning, his benchmarking from peer cities, his accountability metrics. He actually lives within our community. He's a proven executive. He successfully managed budgets.
Charlie, he lives, he lives in Flagler Beach.
Yeah, and, and I'm sure he'd be willing to move, just like any good executive would. Um, and he's ran an organization of over, you know, ninety-five thousand people, so I think we're making a mistake by not bringing him in.
Okay, do we have consensus to move forward with those two gentlemen?
Just carry it down to two.
Councilman Miller? Yes, Councilman Miller? Are you good with that?
So, so we're intent on just two?
Well, if everyone's eliminating Mr. Gepkin because of stuff they saw on the internet...
Yeah, I mean, I do feel like that if...
Yeah, but if one drops out, if somebody drops out, then we're down to the, down to one. We're in the same boat as we were a few months ago.
Then we got...
You know, I thought the intent was to go with three.
Well, we can, we can invite Mr. Gepkin to explain, if he wants to come before.
Or we bring in Mr. West.
I'm, I'm sorry, Charlie, I'm, I'm not gonna go with that because, uh, the same thing you said about Mr. Uresti when he applied, and you said he was a technician. Uh, Mr., Mr. Uresti had more experience in a municipal environment, working for a city than, than this brigadier general, and you threw him out with the bathwater, so I can't go with that.
Okay, it's payback, I get it.
It's not payback, it's honesty.
Okay.
He'd be, he's probably more suited as a college professor from what I saw. No, no payback.
Here's my concern, because I do, I can't appreciate what Councilman Gambaro said about if one drops out, then we're, but, but, you know, I mean, I, in all honesty, I think either McLaughlin or Frazier, Frazier could do this job, and I think they do well. So, if one of them dropped, I don't, I wouldn't be, you know, oh, man, we lost our guy. I wouldn't feel that way. My concern about Gepkin, the, the biggest thing that concerned me was him going outside of the board direction. That is a big no-no. When, if you read some of his stuff, it explicitly said they had repetitive issues of him going outside of board direction. That, to me, was the, the number one thing that I cannot tolerate. So, for me, I liked him. I'm with you, Councilman Sullivan, but I just can't get past that.
I came to that conclusion.
I, I agree. I think it kind of says, you know, I'm smart, and I think I'm smarter than the people that are directing policy.
Who, I'm sorry, Councilman Miller, who was the fourth in that...
No. Well, if you were automatically eliminating Gepkin and West.
Yes.
West and Gepkin would have more votes and points than Shembry or...
After...
Six.
After those two.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, it would be... Sorry, who are your top...
So, they're asking, I guess, who is fifth?
The way they were ranked was Frazier...
We eliminated three and four.
Gepkin and McLaughlin. Who would be the fourth?
Then you had, uh, you had Gepkin and West were your, your next.
They were three and four, basically.
Based off of points.
So, it's, it's up to you, but, um, you know, I don't...
I think Frazier and McLaughlin are good. I think we narrowed it down.
I'm good with Frazier and McLaughlin.
You good with that, Councilman Miller?
I'm good with it because I think, I think that we already have consensus on what, you know, what we're doing forward.
Okay, one, two, three, we got four, four to one. You have consensus, Ms... Fuller, God almighty. Ms. Fuller, you have your direction. Well, when, when do we want to set up these interviews?
We...
Mayor, you previously told us November thirteenth.
Okay.
But if you wanted to speed that process up or keep it on track, or it's...
I believe if I'm not mistaken, uh, one of them's from Wyoming and the other one's from Illinois.
Okay, well, if, if we keep it the same, that gives them time to watch this video and determine if they want to come interview with our, our city. So, I'd say we stay on track. What did you say the date was?
November thirteenth.
November thirteenth, Ms. Fuller.
That's plenty of time to arrange travel and all that stuff, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and my only concern is kind of similar to the last time that, you know, we start having people drop out if they're involved in other searches and things like that. So, that would be the only reason to speed it up, to me, is to just make sure that we get to choose between our two candidates.
About a month, though, I think that's reasonable.
All right, you have the guidance you need, Ms. Fuller?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Would you like the interview process to be the same? Because we need to, um, set that up in the meantime. So, we had the panel interview, we did the thirty-minute one-on-one sessions with you all, the city tour, so we're gonna run the same format as previous.
Same as the last. We had them give a presentation, right?
Yes.
So, yes.
I like that process.
Okay.
Okay, and then, just to put it out there, something for you to be thinking about is salary. I would be, I would recommend thinking about putting a cap on it to where it's like, do not exceed. I think then, then you got some negotiating room on whoever you put on the negotiating team.
Okay.
Because this wasn't advertised, this, the compensation wasn't advertised whenever they were applying.
And what's the current city manager salary, base salary?
I believe I'm at one ninety some, somewhere in there.
One ninety, I'd say cap it at two fifty. Anybody have a problem with that?
No, I think that's reasonable.
I think it's more than reasonable.
No, I think that, that gives room to negotiate if there's someone that we really want, um, that we want to pay for, um, but, you know, keeps it in the same reasonable range. I mean, we're talking about...
Do we want to do range? Do you want to do a low and then high?
Two-ten to two-fifty.
Well, I think the low would be the current, current salary.
Yeah.
I, I support two-fifty.
I think if you look at, if you look at comp, comp, that's exactly where it is. It's two-twenty-five, two-fifty range.
I, I don't disagree.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about, as was mentioned, a huge budget, you know, it's a lot to manage. We need an executive to manage that.
All right, so we're comfortable. You're comfortable, Ms. Fuller?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're gonna, any other comments? We open it up for public comment. Seeing no one come forward? What you got, Ms. Henry?
Denise Henry, Palm Coast. First thing is, I, this, I feel that we have been really left in the dark because we know nothing about these candidates, not like the first time where there was a lot of information. So, I'm really feeling disenchanted about that. And I don't know if you want to call this in just support of, of Councilman Gambaro, but Mr. West did get two, uh, first-place votes, and you're, you know, you don't want to consider him, and he is a local person, and I'd rather have a local person than somebody like, I don't even know where these people are from, but I'd rather have a local person than somebody in a different state. So, that's my comments.
Thank you, ma'am. There's a lot of information out there, Ms. Henry, uh, but I can send you what I have if you'd like to take a look at some of it.
I think Flagler Live published both their video and their white papers, um, today. So, that's out there for you to review.
If you, if you're inclined to go to that website, Ms. Henry. Any further public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dice. Uh, any finals on this one? Anything, anything to follow up?
No.
Okay, we'll move into our final, thank you, Ms. Fuller.
You're welcome.
We'll move into our final public participation. Anyone have any final public participation? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Chantal Pruninger. I hear about public, no, affordable housing, and I was at the land development board meeting the other day, and I heard that again and again, and I said to myself, uh, what do they mean? Is it apartments, uh, uh, they want a certain percentage of, um, new contract to include those, uh, affordable houses? But then if these are apartments, once again, it becomes high-density residential, which means, uh, draining our water resource and increasing the, uh, traffic issue. So, if there's something else about affordable housing that is not apartment, I'd like to know about it. So, that's the first thing. Second thing, yes, the swells. I came for information about the logic behind, um, parking on the swell. Why between six and eleven at night and not twenty-four, uh, seven, and nobody has ever answered back? So, I came up with the conclusion that there's no logic, and if there's no logic, nothing that can be explained, why just not take it off and let people park on their own swells if they want? And the last thing was, um, I saw that the city transmits portable water to Maryland, Maryland and Flagler County for Beverly Beach, and, uh, how does it do that if the actual supply does not even fully meet the demand for the city? Then you want us to drink reclaimed wastewater or make sure we sold out on low-pressure showerheads? Uh, I think if you give people a chance, they would say no to reclaim wastewater, um, as drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Jeremy Davis, and I live at sixty-sixth Parady Lane. Before I begin, I want to take a moment to say thank you to Acting City Manager Lauren Johnston for stopping to say hello at the Pink Army 5K and the council member Teresa Ponteira. It was great seeing you there as well, and I appreciate you taking the time to come out and meet with us at my home. For over two years, I've been standing here respectfully but persistently trying to protect my property from flooding that began after the lot next door at sixty-two Parady Lane was elevated and approved by this city. When that permit was issued, the natural drainage pattern between our lots was changed. Since then, I've experienced repeated flooding that never existed before. I provided photos, surveys, and city correspondence that clearly show where the issue started. I filed records requests, met with staff, and stayed engaged every step of the way, yet the problem remains unresolved. In those two years, I spent over seventy-eight thousand dollars repairing damage I didn't cause. I've done everything by the book, and I remain patient, but that patience doesn't stop the water from coming where it shouldn't. I'm also still waiting on a simple explanation, an email clarifying why eleven city workers and a deputy came to my property over one piece of PVC pipe. No one has justified that visit, and that kind of response toward a homeowner trying to protect his property sends the wrong message. I'm here tonight because I still believe in fairness, transparency, and accountability, and since property rights have been such a big part of tonight's discussion, I want to remind everyone that this is what those rights look like when they're tested. When someone's home, time, and savings are impacted by decisions made right here, I'm not asking for special treatment, I'm asking for fairness, communication, and resolution because property rights only matter when they're upheld equally for every resident, not just spoken about it in meetings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Carr.
I just wanted to make one quick comment. We do appreciate the traffic common plan in action, and, uh, it works, it is working well in our neighborhood. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dice. Any follow-ups, City Manager?
No, ma'am.
Explain the swell parking.
Yeah.
Can you do that?
Um, no, but we do have staff looking into it because, um, we know that it could possibly come up during the LDC conversations, so it's not something that I'm prepared to discuss with you tonight, but staff is actively working on it in the background, trying to find a best path moving forward.
Okay, uh, to me, I, I think one of the reasons I always thought that, well, one, the aesthetics, you know, people parking in the, you know, like my house, I'm on a corner, so you are too, right, Ty?
Yeah.
You know, you could have people...
Yeah, any, any parking on that corner makes it, the corner very dangerous because there's turns happening, it's a bottleneck.
But I, I think I've had somebody say, you know, well, if cars are parked in a swell overnight, they could sink and, and cause ruts in the swell. Um, also, uh, mosquito control comes through and sprays, and you don't know when they're coming through, but they're there to specifically spray those swells, but I, I've never heard a, a definitive answer why that was part of the code.
It's also public safety. If they're parking on the street, then oftentimes, then the vehicle, then the apparatuses can't maneuver the streets, they're not wide enough to park all those vehicles just on the streets. So, then do you prohibit on-street parking? Uh, and people are sleeping, and people are sleeping, so they're less like, if an accident
And people are sleeping, so they're less like, if an accident has come or, um, an apparatus is coming down the road, then people aren't moving their vehicles parked in the swells for, you know, right now they're doing either construction work or it's temporary, right? So that was another reason in staff's analysis that they had told me, but we're working on it, uh, behind the scenes to be prepared whenever it comes in front of the LDC.
I'd also heard a concern that, you know, potentially people were sleeping overnight in vehicles as well. Um, I, you know, I don't think that's a big threat in Palm Coast, but I think that was part of the initial concern in terms of the ordinance as well.
Yeah, and it is, our streets, there is, there was a method to the madness when they, they wrote that. They, they wrote it for a reason. I don't, you know, that's the ones I've heard was mosquito control, ruts in the, the swells, especially if you're parking in some, a vacant lot, you know, you could abuse that.
My thing, my biggest thing is you can do it in someone else's yard. That's my biggest thing is like, there's no requirement that it has to be your house to park in a swell. That seems rather rude to just park in someone's yard.
Let them get the ticket. Uh, anything else, City Managers? Do you have anything else? Okay, we'll move into, uh, discuss the city matters. The city council is not on the agenda.
I just had a, a response. I don't, I don't want to go out of order. Um, to Mr. Davis, um, I owe you an email because we met with staff, I met with a lot of staff members today to talk very robustly about the infill lot issues. That included building department, code enforcement, and stormwater. Um, and we just couldn't align everybody's schedules until today, so I do owe you an email. It didn't happen until four o'clock. And I owe a couple of the residents that had to reach out to me emails as well, so I apologize it's taken this long, but I'll get you that email to kind of update you.
All right, anything else for the comments, public comments?
No.
Okay, all right, now we'll move into city council matters not on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, uh, water. So we are in overcapacity for water, like we, we have enough water, we just have to plan for the future.
That is correct, and we do have, um, out-of-area limit agreements. They actually pay more in water services in Marineland and in Beverly Beach.
Twenty-five percent.
Right, any twenty-five percent more, um, anywhere that we are water service, but we have inter-local agreements with those jurisdictions.
Which was a bill that did not pass to remove that.
Correct.
They were trying to remove it.
Yes, they were trying to remove it to where we couldn't charge that, that, that twenty-five percent extra.
So Ms. Chantel, they pay a premium. They're pay, paying more than you would as a resident of Palm Coast if they're on the other side of the bridge. Anything else on that? Matters not on the agenda. City Council.
Well, I think we already did the Gators stuff, right?
I have one.
Just go Gators.
Jorge Salinas and his wife Nancy, we had a, a very nice service on this past Sunday at the community center. It was nice that they could do it at the community center. Large crowd, well, well done. Just for information, there's a, a church service at Santa Maria Del Mar Church on Thursday, and then the internment will be at the Jacksonville National Cemetery on Friday, which is a hall up there, but, uh, I might go.
I'll be going if you, yeah.
What time is the service on Thursday?
Noon.
Noon, okay.
Santa Maria Del Mar.
Catholic Church in Flagler Beach.
Yes, yes. Uh, Councilman Gambaro, do you have any last comments?
Nope, nothing for the group, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, city attorney? City manager? Holy moly, nine twenty-five.
Motion to adjourn.